Good evening, I would like to call to order, good afternoon, I would like to call to order the special city council meeting, the time is now three oh two. City Clerk Duarte, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Frometa?
Present.
Councilmember Ortiz?
Present.
Councilmember Trujillo?
Present.
Mayor Protem Pemberton?
Present.
And Mayor Sosa.
Present. Do we have any public speakers?
We don't have any public speakers at this time, Mayor, and we also didn't receive any written public comments.
Thank you. Is there a motion and second to close public comment?
Move to close.
Sorted by the mayor. We will now move on to one item of business on the special meeting agenda. Presentation and discussion of fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six, proposed city budget. City Manager Bradley Azuri staff report.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Um, well, I think this is my third budget workshop, so pretty excited to continue down this road of managing the city. I want to say thank you to the council for confidence and support for the past couple of years. Whenever we get to this point, I want to always make sure that I say thank you to the staff. This is a long road that we start usually in January, putting the budget together, looking at our projections for the next year, for the current year. There, it takes a village to get this done, that's absolutely the case. A lot of work that goes into it, a lot of reviews. So a little bit of negotiating here and there, trying to figure out where we're going to land. As I kind of mentioned, I think over the past couple of months, as I've talked to each of you, the economy outlook for next year is not the brightest at this point. As, as a result of that, we've gone through and tried to make sure that we have a very conservative budget, making sure that we don't see a lot of, because we don't see a lot of growth in our revenues, that, you know, we do our best in meeting our service demands and needs. While revenues are not growing at the rate we'd like them to in the next year, expenses are continuing to grow regardless of that. So right now, you'll see as we go through the presentation, the budget is, I think for the revenue side of the general fund, is about a hundred and sixteen million. That is pretty close to, consistent with what we closed, we planning to close out this year with, so we're not seeing a lot of growth in our revenues into the next year. As a result, we've had to make sure that we realign some services, gain some efficiencies, and make sure that we're as effective and efficient with our revenues, with our resources as much as possible. Again, going back to the thanks, I do want to make sure that I thank our budget team, in particular, our finance department staff for their hard work and putting things together. Really appreciate their dedication and resilience to get through this process, as well as our assistant city manager and our assistant city manager for their hard work in coordinating all the budget work that takes a lot of meetings and efforts and go try this out, try that out. They really have been really resilient and basically very dedicated. And I got to say, I'm very proud of this team. The things that you're going to see today that we've accomplished in the past year have been very significant. A lot of stuff has been going on. We're going to show you a little, I guess, montage of, of that, do a little recap. So instead of me just speaking and showing you the things that we're, telling you about the things that were done, we'd like to show you some of the things that have been accomplished in the past year. And again, thank you for our, to our public information team for putting that all together today. So one of the things that we're, we're pretty excited about, again, looking at the economy, we were able to still grow a little bit in this budget, and that's really thanks to the passage of Measure D, which has been a very, very big success for us. In particular, while you don't see the addition of staffing, a lot of staffing in this proposed budget, you've already done that work as part of the police department assessment that we brought to you earlier in the year. We added additional seventeen staff to our, to our police department, I think twelve sworn officers. I think I've heard some numbers about being at a hundred and twenty-five sworn officers. No, we're actually closer to a hundred and forty, I think we're one thirty-nine, seven, one thirty-seven, thank you. So we actually, you as a council have already taken action to add to, to our staffing levels as a result, and thanks to the Measure D passage. So we want to thank our community for that support, and that was a big help as we look at some of the effects of the economy right now and trying to make sure that we are able to provide good services to the community, and Measure D was a big, big help in that. Looking at the, the presentation, thank you. Today I'll do an introduction and talk a little bit about some of our accomplishments. I'm just going to show you a video, as I mentioned, and I'll go through some of the proposed action items that we have for next year, the ones that I consider to be high service levels. The bulk of the presentation will be from our departments. We'll ask all of our department head team to come up and talk about the efforts that they've been engaged in over the past year, as well as the items that they're planning to work on in the next year and give you an overview of their budget. We'll start with our public safety group, and go through our quality of life team, which includes parks and rec, the space center and the library, our community enhancement team, economic development, community development, public works, and look at our, then our general government entities, and they'll each present to you about what they're doing in their departments. As, at the end of the presentation, we'll look and talk about our community-based organization grant program and provide you with some recommendations on, on grant awards for the next year. After my comments, I will turn over the segment to talk about the finance, financial parts of the budget to our assistant city manager. If we can go to the, the next slide, at this point, I'll try to show you again some of the main accomplishments that we've had in the next year, and hope you enjoy the video. It's a little bit of a different approach to it, but hopefully a little entertaining, and you'll get to see a good snapshot of what happened in the next year. You know what, we, yeah, we should have brought some, we'll make sure we do that in the next one. So if we can go ahead and proceed to that point, please. Let's go right there. Can we bring up a particular slide on the, who's the clicker, Sonia, do you have it?
Can we receive this video? Can we get that?
Yeah, we can, we can post this, or give it copies out of it. So really want to just give you an opportunity to see some of the many things that we were involved and engaged in over the past year. Want to thank staff for all their hard work over the past year. It's been an interesting one. We had, of course, the election, we had other weird things that happened like power outages on Christmas Eve and other. So it's been a, it's been a fun year, it's been an interesting year, and this team has risen up no matter what has gone on. So I'm really proud to be a part of the team and see the things that they've been able to accomplish. And honestly, we probably could have kept going for another five or six minutes because there's been so many things, but those are some of the key items that we've been looking at for, for completing this year. Were able to bring that, that slide up real quick? If not, we can provide you with copies of it afterwards or bring it up when it's ready. Anyway, we'll just continue to move forward. All right, if we could bring up the, the next slide, please, we'll get those copies of that to you here shortly. So after all those things, I did want to go through and highlight some of the, the efforts and activities that I think are important for us to, at least for me, the high-level key initiatives that we're looking at for next year, wanted to highlight those and just make sure you're aware of the things that I'm looking forward to completing next year, making sure we have some substantial progress on. If we can bring up that slide, please. Basically, just some key budget goals, if you're on that, on that page, looking at the five strategic plan areas that we have. Starting with fiscal responsibility, I think I've talked about, we mentioned that we're looking to in the next year, replacing our enterprise resource planning system. Basically, our finance software system needs to be replaced. I think we got about a year and a half, two years before it's obsolete, so we're fast underway in looking at options for its replacement, and we expect in the next year to begin the implementation of, of a new system. Homelessness and homeless and housing issues are getting to be a significant cost center for us. I think we spend on homeless cleanups about half a million dollars just in cleaning up encampments, and that's quite a bit of resources being expended for that. The county did pass Measure A in the past year. However, that money is primarily earmarked for housing-related services, so we're looking for more practical ways to help fund our housing outreach programs, so we'll be looking for in the next year the ways to identify resources that we can bring in through grants and other funds to help offset some of those, our homeless programs. We're always going to make sure that we're looking to live within our means, adopting a structurally balanced budget. We plan to continue to pursue the, the awards from the GFOA and the CSMFO for our financial transparency and excellence in financial reporting, making sure that everybody's aware in the community and other, outside the city here that how we spend money, that we're doing in an appropriate way, and it's, that we're being financially prudent with our resources. Talking about some of the, the issues and concerns in the economy, economic vibrancy is always going to be a concern for us. The one way we can deal with those economic issues is to continue to make sure that we have a resilient economic base here within the city. Part of that entails looking at the back twenty and making sure that we continue to work on guiding the development there. We talked about over the past year, as we looked at some potential housing and bringing in high-quality commercial centers into the back twenty area. We have heard a lot of comments over the past year about, you know, a lot of, a lot of fast food restaurants, although they appear to be popular here, but there is a need for more of a diverse, diversity of restaurants, so we have in our economic strategic plan next year, finding ways to diversify our, our restaurant base so that we can bring in some more high-quality restaurants, as well as shopping opportunities for the, for the community. So that's definitely going to be something that we'll be focusing in on from an economic development standpoint. We have on here, create a plan to attract premier grocery stores to the city, and that really is just, want to make sure that we get it right to the community, that we're not done trying to get Trader Joe's to this, to the city. We're, we want, my team, myself, we'd like to win that, that battle, so we're going to make sure that it's in a part of our high-end strategic initiatives for next year, that we have a good solid plan to continue to recruit and bring that in here to the city. We want to win that. And we are in the process of working on our economic development strategic plan. That will be resolving itself here soon, and of course, next year, we're going to make sure we implement all the strategies that are going to be a part of that. We talked, we have, one of the things that I focus in on the past few years is just making sure that we have a very transparent agenda process. So the staff reports are well-prepared, they're clear. I really have, the goal for me is that anybody that picks it up, I say a lot of times that my ninety-year-old grandmother can pick up a staff report and read it and understand what's going on with it, within the community. Part of that is making sure that we have internally good processes and tracking and making sure our agendas come together effectively, that they're clear, and so we are implementing a new agenda management software system in the next year to go along with that, and again, we want to make sure that we're transparent and clear, everybody knows what's going on here within the city when they pick up our reports. It's, it's getting to be, I think with any industry, tough to attract great talent. And I hear a lot from the council here that Downey is an aspirational city. I want also to Downey to be an aspirational organization, so that people looked at us and say, that's the place that I want to work, that's the place that I want to go and finish my career, that's the place that I can grow. We've been working on over the past years, HR and with other departments, finding best practices for becoming an employer of choice. And as we go through the next year, we want to start having conversations about what tweaks can we make as an organization to make sure that we shine so that people say, I want to go work for Downey and I want to stay in Downey, want to come here. So again, that should do for us next year is to improve our recruitment and strategies to top, attract top talent. Under quality of life, safety and infrastructure, we're happy to, in the fall, we should be doing some groundbreaking and talking about the beginning instruction on the space center expansion building. So that should be moving forward to be an exciting one for us. A new flashpad, we have that as part of one of our parks, researching a location for that. So that's an exciting amenity for the community. We have our new homeless solutions coordinator that's been working here in the city, bringing together our efforts between code enforcement, the police department, the city manager's office. Also, we've had some changes in legislation at the state and federal level. So we need to update and make sure that we have in our homeless action plan, all the best practices for addressing homelessness issues in the community. Second dog park, we make sure we get that installed in the next year at Golden Park. We've had a little bit of a delay in the community garden because of some environmental issues that we're dealing with at the county, but that community garden needs to go in next year as well. And lastly, in, in public engagement, we've had this, our local spending campaign, local, spend local campaign brewing for the past year, whether want to expand that and get that going or robustly within the city. I think the more people understand that they invest in our local businesses and our local economy, the better they make this community. So we'll, we'll, we'll update that and get that going more in the next year. And lastly, we have a lot of requests for services. So we have a new app that we brought on through, through GoGov that's getting itself implemented and we have, we'll have that done early next year so that people can report concerns and issues, get them to staff in effective and efficient manner and make sure that we can address concerns that are out there in the community effectively. Again, these are the, the high priority ones that for me that stand out, that I would like to see get accomplished in for next year. Obviously we have a lot of other strategic initiatives that we're working on as well, but these are kind of top of the mind for me as I move into 25, 26. Next slide. Consistent with what I, I mentioned about the economy, we do not have a significant addition of new staffing for next year. We have, and we've been able to add some additional staff in the prior years. We do have some reclassifications, which means there's no new staff, but they're expanding their, their workload, they're expanding their, their skills and abilities. And so we're moving them to a different level of classification. As you can see, we have the space center, we have a space center supervisor going to a manager in the city manager's office, the public information coordinator going to a specialist, economic development homeless solutions manager going to homeless solutions and housing manager, milving both those roles with that individual. And IT, our system network engineers going to a lead system network engineer and another to ID help desk, IT help desk worker. And then public works, assistant civil engineer going to an associate engineer and then parks and rec a program coordinator to program supervisor. Again, no new staffing here, just an expansion of services that these individuals will be, will be providing. We do have two measure D related, three measure D related staff positions that we're proposing in next year's budget, one of which is a regional fire communication operator, which will be working in dispatch. We provide services to other communities and chief has indicated that he's going to be looking to expand that to other communities and this position will allow and help us be able to manage the potential, that potential expansion. We've had some conversation similar to what we had with our code enforcement officers in prior years, with having our parking enforcement officers being available in the evenings and on weekends. And so we're proposing to have two additional parking enforcement officers that would come onboard to fill those shifts as part of next year's budget proposal. So again, the only change in staffing next year are measure D related and there's three positions proposed in the 25, 26 budget. That brings us to a total of 470 FTEs total for the city. Looking at the budget, the biggest staffing areas, you have police and fire, which are encompass about, about 65% of our overall budging, budgeted staff with public works not too far behind. As I mentioned before, we're kind of a small but mighty team, but we're continuing to provide again, as high quality services as we can for this city. We are, we're expecting to have another great year next year, even though things might be a little tight and a little difficult, our team is resilient and willing to, to work and do its best. And so that is our proposal for next year. And with that, if there are no questions from, from council, I will turn it over to our assistant city manager to talk about some of the basic financials that are in our proposed budget.
Roger, you mentioned the new app. Did you say that'll be effective next year or will it be this year?
It should be early, the, in July, August timeframe, be fully implemented so that it will be able to be used of this year. Yeah. So I meant next fiscal year.
New fiscal year.
There you go. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager Bradley. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the city council. Thank you for affording us the opportunity to share the proposed 25, 26 operating budget. The preparation of this year's proposed budget involves hundreds. So the preparation of the city's proposed budget involves hundreds of staff hours and efforts from all departments. And including exactly what our city manager had shared with you, we would like to thank all our department's heads for their involvement in their year's budget, along with their budget coordinators. I'd also like to take an opportunity to recognize our finance team, some of them who are in the audience here today. So specifically finance manager Francesca Navarro and senior accountant Suzie Martinez, who are critical in the development of this budget. Also from the city manager's team, I also just wanted to acknowledge public information coordinator Alex Perez, Axel Perez, senior management analyst Judy Montenegro, management analyst Shanti Duran, and assistant to the city manager Marlon Ramirez. I also wanted to take an opportunity to recognize our city council for their budget subcommittee, who did a thorough review of our budget and asked many questions. And we thank them for taking the time to analyze our proposed budget. So before you hear today is a total appropriations of all city funds as illustrated on this slide. And the total appropriations for the year's budget is $325 million. Of that, the general fund is representing $116 million, which is about 36% of the budget. The overall budget is an increase of roughly 14.18% when compared to last year's budget. The increase is primarily due to one-time CIP projects and new expenditures related to measure S and measure D. And specifically speaking regarding the CIP projects, the increase over last year's about 9.5% increase. And I do want to acknowledge this represents the desire of the city council to meet community needs related to many CIP projects, whether it is the streets, the alleys, the streetlights, sidewalks, all the things that have been mentioning. So this is showing that increase and needs in the community and also the city council priorities. Additionally, we have all other funds listed as 33% of about 107 million. So those are other restricted funds that we cannot consider as part of the general fund. So those are your grants, water fund, the golf fund and things of that nature. I also acknowledge that under all other funds, that also includes measure S and measure D. Even though previously in previous years, as you may recall, measure S used to be under general fund, we are now separating it out to be more transparent and also to enhance accountability and accounting of those monies. So those are now considered restricted and it's under all other funds. Moving forward, we have the general fund executive summary. Looking at the executive summary and where the city is expected to end at June 30th, 2026, we are estimated to be at about $43 million. And then after removing non-spendable monies identified in the most recent act for, and just for clarity's sake, non-spendable monies are prepaid notes and loans of that nature. So when we're moving for those items, the fund balance or reserve balance is looking, is at approximately $34.3 million. The current slide then discusses the general fund reserve requirements. To write a little bit of background, according to the city's reserve policy, it states that the general fund reserve balance consists of the total of the emergency reserves and the stability reserve. Emergency reserves for the purposes sustaining the city's operations in the case of an unfreeing catastrophic event such as an earthquake. And the stability reserve is established to provide a bridge in the event of unexpected significant loss of revenues or unanticipated major expenditures that we weren't anticipating in the budget. The target level of the total general fund reserves is set at 35% and of the most three year average annual audited general funding operating revenues. So before you on the side, you see the breakdown of the three years in the average and what the 35% would look like. So when comparing to the number that we had just referenced previously, you're going to see that the current funding level is currently at 33%. I do want to note that the key driver for this, why it's not exactly at the target is because of recent settlements that the city has been experiencing in recent years. The city staff is continuing to monitor the status of the general fund reserves balance, especially taking into account the anticipating other settlements that may come through as all cities are experiencing an increase in claims and also of projects that are going to be anticipated, such as the gas, the southeast gateway line and also economic development projects. Moving on to estimated revenues for all funds. So this slide here demonstrates an approximate increase of about 6% over year over year. The primary drivers are new revenues coming in from measure D and one-time funding from the space center and other city capital improvements. Of that, you're going to see that 44% of it is the general fund at 116 million and also all other funds at 146 million, which is 56% of the budget. So again, restricted revenues for that are the water fund, golf funds, special revenue grants, things that are restricted that we are not able to utilize and under the general fund. The next slide is a breakdown of city general fund revenues. The key drivers for the city revenues are property tax and sales tax. You'll notice that while the property tax and sales tax demonstrate a 3.6 and a 3.9 increase over the adjusted budget, the increases are much more conservative when compared to the year end estimate, as you can see in the middle column. This year, the city experienced some one-time additional revenues related to investment gains, also related to a sale of property and increases in other revenue sources that we don't expect to continue in the upcoming fiscal year. Additionally, recognizing the current economic and climate fluctuations in the market, inflationary pressures that continue, potential reductions in the federal and state funding and continue potential decrease in consumer confidence, the city is in, after consultation with our tax consultant, proposed a more conservative budgeted numbers for revenues for the upcoming fiscal year. Other key areas of note, so other taxes, which you'll see here, the other taxes up by 6.3%, 6.37%. And that's related primarily to franchise taxes and also to business taxes. And we anticipate a small increase in those areas related particularly to franchise taxes. Revenues from other agencies, that's related primarily from the state monies that we receive. So items, for example, the state motor vehicle and lieu monies and also state mandated, mandated cost reimbursement back to the city. I do want to note that we did also take a conservative approach in that. As you may be aware, the state is facing a budget deficit and one of the areas they look at to reductions and ways to save money is cost reimbursement back to agencies. So we did put a cost, an estimated number that is more conservative, knowing how that is going to look like moving forward. Fines and forfeitures, you're going to see that there is an increase there and that is related to the two new proposed parking enforcement officers. Looking at the type of activity that we anticipate from the parking enforcement officers, we do increase at about 140,000 in fines related to that. Other revenues, this primarily relates to the city's participation in the California Department of Healthcare Services Public Provider Ground Emergency Medical Transport Program. It's a very long name. We joined that in June of 2023 and that is a supplemental reimbursement program to public providers who transport medical patients like our fire department does. Revenues from this program have come in much higher than we anticipated and it is anticipated to continue to increase, especially with the recent rate increases as identified by the LA county, which is the marker that we use for these revenue funds. Additionally, you're going to see a slight increase in inner fund revenues. This is related to a cost allocation. So a cost allocation analysis was done and it's basically the overhead analysis of all the other funds outside of general fund. So there's a determination of how much administrative overhead those funds cost and then they're charged that into the general fund. And so those monies are coming from the other funds to account for the administrative overhead that staff is related to those funds. And then lastly, the operating transfers, you're going to see a decrease and that is related to a one-time transfer that occurred last year related to ARPA monies. Last year, the city council authorized to reuse the ARPA monies that was given to the city into different areas. And one of those monies was a one-time transfer to the general fund was about $900,000. This year, that is not occurring and that was primarily the makeup for that change for this year.
I would say this is a good, I'm sorry, a good slide to show where the bulk of our sales tax revenue is coming. We know our property taxes and values are high, but that second number, the sales and use tax, well, we do that shop local and we were doing those videos to keep promoting, to buy the gas here, all of that, it sure does add up. And so I'd like to maybe see that also next year, that we keep promoting, we each pick a place and let residents shop at places they don't know or eat where they don't know that we can still keep promoting that. Thank you.
Yes, so as part of last year's rebrand for the Discover Downey, that was one of the items that then Mayor Trujillo had shared that he wanted to see. So we had incorporated some of that, but now as part of the new rebrand and also reanalyzing the city's social media, we're going to be reinforcing that message that it's important to shop local.
So I'm going to just jump in real quick here. This is one of the places I wanted to say that I was saying earlier, that it's not so rosy. At the end of the year, we're projecting 115.8 million dollars in revenues. Next year, we're at 116.2. Usually we take the, the end of the year estimate as the base where we go next year. If we were to get three and a half percent growth next year, that would be excellent. But at this point, we're really not in that, in that, in that range. So we don't see a lot of growth and we're not projecting a lot of growth in our general fund revenues in the next year, but we will be tracking as we go throughout the year to hopefully see the economy recover a little bit and having a little more of a, a buffer in that number as we go throughout the year. But we would have liked to have seen again, a couple of percentage points, but we really are less than a percent at this point. So that was the, the not so rosy outlook.
And thank you for that, City Manager Bradley, because other cities who are also finalizing their budgets are taking a similar approach, more conservative this year as they move forward, hoping that revenues do come in higher than anticipated, but taking more of a conservative approach in the current climate. So here is just a bar chart graphical representation of what we just talked about, as you can see, year over year. The next chart is provided by HDL and it demonstrates the over increase in sales. As you notice, overall sales taxes rebounded from the pandemic. You're going to notice that brick and mortar recently has demonstrated decline and online sales has done an uptick, which, which is something that we are aware of, that there is a change in consumer spending and where they're spending it. And so this obviously matches that. This is just something that we also are monitoring and as you may know, and this is something we have discussed in previous workshops and budget discussions, is that when you can go to online sales, not every online sales, point of sales revenues come back to the city. There's a lot of analysis that goes into that, where the fulfillment center is located, if it's in a state, out of state and the different tax measures that are going into it. So that's something that we do monitor as online sales continue to grow. This next one is also the sales tax fourth quarter report that is also provided by HDL. So Downey's receipts for October through December were up 5.6%. New motor vehicle sales continued to rebound with dealerships showing favorable growth, even with the continued high pricing and financing costs. General consumer goods managed to continue to do well despite the current concerns of the consumers and the economy. Full service stations are down and this is a trend that we continue to see with the increase in use of EV cars and the network growing for EV stations. We're seeing this across the board, even currently the state is viewing a 14% decrease in fuel stations. So that is aligned with trends. And all other sectors continue to grow and increase slightly despite worries of inflation, tariffs and other economic issues that we be facing. I do want to note what makes this a little unique for Downey is that during the same quarter, LA county experienced, experienced a decline of 2.8 and the state also saw a decline of 1.4. And this is actually similar to what happened last year. If you remember our workshop, we showed a similar slide and the city again was higher than both the state and the county, which highlights Downey's unique economic position when compared to the region and to the state. But that being said, working with HDL and other of our consultants, this is not expected to continue moving forward. That is something that is expected to decline and looking at early projections for the next quarter's report, we are starting to see that slightly. So next, we're going to show general fund proposed expenditure by type. So when compared to last year's adjusted budget, it's approximately up by 4%. I do want to note that the fund, again, does not include Measure S or Measure D, as previously it did include it, specifically Measure S. So what is a little different for Measure S and Measure D, as you may recall, there is another report that goes out annually to the council. This report is given first to the Citizens Oversight Committee, and it's audited, and that has a complete auditing of all the expenditures and revenues related to Measure S and now also Measure D, and the fund balance is related to that. So I just want to make that note, and that is separate from what you see here on the general fund expenditures. The total dollar amount, and I should have mentioned earlier, is $116 million, and that is what is up over by 4%. The next slide is demonstrating the $116 million by functional area. This is going to go into more detail with each of your department heads in the following slides. Each of the department heads have a slide in conjunction with their accomplishments and goals related to the budget, their general fund budgeted numbers, along with their FTE. So you'll see that in more detail in the upcoming slides. And the next slide is the general fund proposed expenditures by department, and you'll see the breakout for each of the department and the percentage of the total budget related to that department. I do want to note, for public safety, is approximately 57.47 or 58%. But if you were to add Measure S and Measure D expenditures, that number is up to 64%, which is in line with the city's practices been and monies dedicated to public safety. And that is also in line with keeping with best practices related to bond rating agencies. We typically like to see a range between 60 and 66%, and so we're right in line with that for our spending. And it does also highlight to the community the city council's commitment to public safety, that we have put that as the primary driver for our budgets here in the city.
And the Measure S and D expenditures are for capital equipment improvements, things of that nature, tangible items?
That is correct. So primarily for personnel. As you recall, the recent assessment for PD outlined another 17 positions, so that goes directly to Measure D. Measure S has another listing of about 24 positions that went for that for Measure S, and in conjunction with that, there's a number of one-time CIP or equipment costs that are looked at every year towards Measure S and Measure D. Separate from this, I just want to note that Fund 24 is the Columbia Memorial Space Center, and Fund 39 is the theater. So that is not part of the general fund. You're going to see, under non-departmental, those are transfers out that go into those two departments. In conjunction with that, there's also a large dollar amount related to things such as pension obligation bonds that are coming out of non-departmental. So that concludes staff's presentation on the budget. Staffs are available to answer any questions that you may have.
I have a question. In looking at our reserves, the stability part of the reserves is currently at 20%. Can you just summarize for me, what's the basis of that? Why is it higher than emergency reserve?
The city council, at the time in 2017, set up the requirements for that, and so they had determined at the time what stability reserves. And so the listing for it was primarily, just as a bridge, another buffer, if you will, if there was unexpected losses related to revenues, and also an unexpendable expenditure that hit the budget. So it's ultimately another buffer, if you will, for savings for the city, but that was determined from the city council back in 2017.
Based on your institutional knowledge, Fania, and I don't know if this is an unfair question, how do we compare today to surrounding cities who are also saving money in reserves? Is that 20% stability, sort of like the going rate for cities? Do we know?
Yeah, so I'll say that every city is done very differently, and so not everybody has a similar policy. Each city council does it their own way, so it's very hard to compare ours to other policies. Probably another reference point is the GFOA. The GFOA has an outline of recommended reserve balances. So the minimum that GFOA recommends is a two-months operating. So it's about 16.6%, closer to 17. So let me pull up that number, what that number would be, just so you have it. So about 16.6% or 17% rounded up, that's about $18 million is the minimum that the GFOA recommends.
Okay, and so we're a couple million above that?
We're above that on the yes, if you look at totality for both the 20 and the 15, we're above that. I'll just note that, separate from that, though, there are other one-time monies or expenditures or projects that are coming through that could impact the fund balance that you see here.
The GFOA also recommends that, while that is the absolute minimum, the two months, the 16.6, they also recommend that cities analyze their financial exposures in their communities, how much you're invested into sales tax and things of that nature, and then to increase that number as you deem appropriate financially for your city. In this case, this council has decided in the past to go at 35%, but again, that's again up to the community to decide for themselves, but that minimum is the 16.6.
So hypothetical, a big-box store is going to come into Downey, and we want to support them and perhaps use some reserve money to assist them? Would you recommend they come from stability or emergency? Is that a fair question, Roger?
Well, that's something that we could talk about at that time. Really, I guess we'll look at how each of those is defined, but I think reserves are always for investment opportunities within the city, and so when those opportunities come up, that'd be something we talk about with the council, determine.
Thank you.
And I just was speaking with you on a number of things, but you pointed out since we're on that slide, that the 15% is a two-month, in a sense...
It's pretty close to the two-month number.
It's close to the number.
Right, that gives us an idea. Thank you.
So if it pleases the council, then we'll move on to department presentations, and our first department up is our police department. So Chief, if you don't mind, taking the, stay a stand. I guess I could say that to the chief.
Good afternoon, Mayor Sosa, members of the city council. It's my pleasure to be able to talk a little bit about our police department, our different goals or achievements that we've had from this current fiscal year, and then we'll go into a little bit of what our goals are for the next year's budget. So our department was incorporated in 1957, so almost 68 years now, but we're basically broken up into three different divisions. We have our field operations, which, for lack of better words, those are people that you're primarily getting in contact on a daily basis. It's our patrol officers, it's our mental health officers, our canines, our motor officers, parking enforcement, and then our dispatchers on the radio. Field operations probably is about three-quarters of our personnel. Our detective bureau, basically our investigative unit, comprised of detectives working crimes against property, crimes against persons, special investigations, which includes our gangs and narcotics units. Also in there is our forensic units that come out there and process the scenes for evidence collection, and then also our new crime analyst, which I'll touch on in a little bit with one of our achievements. Very proud of our detective bureau. I'll put our detective bureau up against any other agency's detective bureau, especially an agency our size for the job our detective bureau does, and having our own robbery homicide unit, and the amount of cases that they're solving on their own is absolutely phenomenal. And like I said, I put them up against anybody. Final part of our divisions, our administrative division, that's obviously all the behind stuff. It's my office, but more importantly, it's our special enforcement team who handles all the recruitment and hiring of all of our officers. They do all the backgrounds, excuse me, has our records unit, which processes all of our reports, all of our traffic citations, all of our arrests. Also in there, it's our police officer recruits, it's our professional standards unit, which does all of our internal investigations, ensuring all policies and procedures are maintained, and then also our neighborhood watch coordinator. So getting into our accomplishments from last year, I kind of touched on it real quick about our crime analyst. This is something, when I was overseeing our detective bureau, that I saw an extremely important need for this. With all the technology and especially with cell phones and really pinging those locations, and I don't know exactly how they do it, but it's phenomenal to be on their firsthand and see what they're doing. And especially with our homicide unit, I seen it firsthand, we had a homicide in August of '22 involving an off-duty officer, and we didn't have a crime analyst at that point, and we were relying on the sheriff's department. And sheriff's department crime analysts came on and working side-by-side with our homicide detectives, and I'm telling you, within the hour, I think we had significant leads and a lot of different motives, and it really opened our eyes to the importance of them and the amount of technology that's involved now in our investigations, especially through cellphone data, but not only just that, but everybody's got a camera, whether it's at their home or on the cellphone, and what they can do with that is just unbelievable. That's one of the other items that we've asked for this year is additional technology to assist our crime analyst and really getting up-to-date information. People hear crime analyst and think, oh, they're just going to put together where the crimes occur in an area. That is an important part of that job, but then working side-by-side with our homicide detectives especially, and as the data from the cellphone towers and everything like that comes into, for them to analyze that is extremely important. And like, I just go back to that case from three years ago, I remember I was looking at it. All the reports come in, you do this search warrant, and all this data comes in, and you're looking at it, you're like, what the heck is this? Like, it looks like it was in hieroglyphics. That's where these people come in so handy, and she's been a great asset to our team and our investigative unit, and I really look to support her further as time goes along and we grow this unit. The next two kind of go hand-in-hand. It's been talked a little bit, we added 17 positions this year through Measure D, which was that standing we got. Out of the 17 positions, 12 of them are sworn officers. Through the assessment, we're looking at basically nine of those being on field operations, which means eight of those are being pretty much put as patrol officers, one was a traffic detective. The other three spots, I guess one more would be field operations, which is another patrol, or, excuse me, another traffic officer, which the assessment was talking about like a nighttime graveyard person or something like that, but I'm looking at more of a needs of having another motor officer and expanding our motor unit and really having an impact on the speeding that's going on in the community. Excuse me, the other two full-time sworn officer positions are regular detective spots. We did get five more of the professional staff, one of which we've already filled. We had two new forensic spots. One of those, we used one of our part-time employees was put in that spot, so we kind of offset the cost a little bit, we eliminated that part-time position, but we were able to promote her. We also had the need for a training coordinator. The training coordinator, especially through my career, has really developed and evolved, and there's so much perishable skills training, mandatory training that we have, where a lot of it is we're having to prepare the courses ourself and introducing it to the post of police officer standards and training units for approval, and having that training coordinator do that job is extremely important. That's currently been filled by one of our 960 new tenants who unfortunately won't be able to stay with us forever. I'd love to, I'd like to keep them, but we have a part-time position that we would offset the cost with that as well by eliminating the part-time position, having that full-time position. The other two positions would be an office assistant. The office assistant would help out with a lot of the different administrative tasks, like filing in some of our municipal codes, handling our CCW permit process, which has grown, you know, from issuing one a year to now in the mid-'70s, and the applications just keep coming in and in. So that person would help out with those types of things and other administrative things throughout the administrative division.
Did you say the mid-'70s?
Mid-'70s now.
You don't mean 1970s?
No, we're, I think, the latest number I got was '76. That's '76 this past year.
To date, yes.
And there's a lot more applications coming in. We're literally, every year, we had one, he was a firearms dealer, and then we had added an attorney at one point, but just with the laws changing over the last couple of years, everybody's been inundated with that, and whereas we used to have the sheriffs handle that part, the sheriffs came back a couple of years ago and said that they can do it themselves. I think they've got, I want to say it's in the teens, they got like 19 people or something like that, that are just handling CCW applications for the county. So it's definitely, it's a burden, and unfortunately, there's nowhere else for us to get additional revenues to offset that, but that'd be one of the things we would have that person doing, which is also being done by another 960 new tenant who obviously can't stay on permanently for us as well.
Chief, how many of the 17 positions that have been allocated through Measure D, and out of those, you said 12 sworn, how many have we been able to hire?
So we're, I'll get into some of the staffing, but we're authorized 137 now. We are currently, we have a new officer lateral starting on Monday, so with that, we're down 18, which sounds terrible, but if you take out the 12 we had, that puts us down six. And at this time last year, I think we were in the teens as far as we're being down. So our special enforcement team is doing a great job, and I'll touch on a little bit more with the next part, you know, with the recruitment that we're doing and trying to get the, you know, qualified candidates over here. But yeah, we are down 18 right now, or on Monday, we'll be down 18. And we have a couple other retirements that are coming through the year, and you know, through attrition, there's always, you know, one or two unexpected something that comes up, but our team, and I'll touch on that part of it, is doing a great job. We're getting a lot of different candidates and backgrounds, and I'm cautiously optimistic about hiring a lot of them. I don't like to put numbers on it, because then when it doesn't happen, and it's like, I don't know if I'm jinxing myself or what, but it always leaves a disappointment, but I'll touch a little bit more on that and what we're trying to do to get those positions filled.
Just to clarify, Chief, sorry, you said we're down 18 sworn officers, correct?
18 sworn officers, and that includes the 12 additional ones that were through Measure D. And then the final position for our professional staff, that was that, it was another property and evidence technician. That's another one, when I was overseeing the detective bureau, I saw extreme importance of it. You just think of somebody just collecting the evidence, putting it in a locker, and you're done with it. Having that chain of custody on all that evidence is extremely important, and we went through a lot of different, through a transition about three years ago, and we have one technician doing it right now, and it's too much for one person, and it's requiring one of our forensic supervisor to help out and assist there. This way, it'll help out with that coverage, and it'll give us additional coverage, too, when people are trying to get property out, instead of it just being four days, they'll have opportunity to get the property out five days a week as well. This next slide, it will show on the left is our general fund for the budget for the police department. Excuse me, let me back up, I didn't talk about the recruitment stuff, I skipped right over that. So the recruitment, historically for us, we have a two-person, two-officer team for our special enforcement team, but we've really been tasking them with, hey, I need you to get your backgrounds done in a timely manner. So in order to do that, we have to take away some of their duties, and we create a collateral duty with us of really doing different recruitment events and really trying to think outside the box to try and get these qualified people in. So, you know, it was asked shortly ago, you know, about hiring. We do monthly testings now, that wasn't something that we always did, and what I'm excited about is I've got five that are looking really good right now for hopefully an early fall academy, and it sounds like there's four more for a latter part. I say that, something always seems to happen, but cautiously optimistic, we do have another lateral, I don't want to say by the agency yet, that's also just starting in backgrounds with us, so there's a lot of promise out there. We're getting, we are starting to see a lot more. I know Human Resources is going to talk a little bit about it, too, but it's been a team effort with Human Resources in getting these monthly testings together and really trying to get qualified candidates. So the one thing we won't do is, you know, obviously lower our level, but, so just to give you, yeah, just give you an example, some of the events that our team has been attending that historically we wouldn't go to. We go like a recruitment event at a high school, or not a high school, but a college or junior college or some sort of job fair, and a lot of times, you know, we're not getting the right candidates. So we were really trying to focus on places where people come in or like kind of ready to get into law enforcement. So some of those, we went to Anaheim Fit Expo, went to Long Beach Marathon, went to collegiate softball tournament, we went to a safety recruitment event in Norwalk, we went to Camp Pendleton for a job fair there. We continue to speak at different military bases, trying to recruit...
That's what I was going to say, the military is...
Trying to attract those people coming in, and there's a, I think it's called PAWS, there's another military program we're looking at, too, and seeing what we can do to join and get involved in that, and really kind of getting the first crack at some of these military personnel that are being, you know, easing their way out of the military and being able to get them a good, high-paying job. We've also gone to Long Beach City College, speaking of their athletic teams, they've been very proactive with that. Talking of volleyball teams, I mean, I worked set in recruitment over 20 years ago, and I never thought like, hey, let's go to junior colleges and talk to athletes, but what better person? I mean, they're already physically fit, they're ready to go in the academy, now we just work on a couple of the different things, and they're really doing a really good job of thinking outside the box. Another thing they're going to be doing, excuse me, is they're going to be doing some other... Other thing they're going to be doing, excuse me, is they're going to be doing some other recruitment videos. We are having in our budget from last year and hoping here in the next month or so, we'll get those completed. But there's going to be recruitment video and there's going to be also some smaller ones. So when they're going out to these events, they can really highlight the different assignments and details that we have to really hopefully attract these different candidates.
And how long is the recruitment? So from beginning to end, what's your estimated time for them to?
Well, we try to do as fast as we can. So we do a monthly testing, which are written tests. So we proctor those guys for the written test. And then usually it's within a week or two is the physical agility test. And at that physical agility test, if they complete the physical agility test, our special enforcement team, one of the members is there, they immediately give them their oral interview schedule, which is that following week. They say, hey, come on in. They take that and that following week, they're called in to sort their background. Backgrounds depends, if you have a 21, 22-year-old young adult there that doesn't have a whole lot of life experience, those ones go a lot quicker. Now, you have somebody else that's lived in several different locations and even out of the state or had several other jobs, those take a little bit longer. But generally, we try and get those done in probably about two to three months, which obviously includes our pre-screening with them, includes a polygraph examination, giving them the conditional offer of employment and which requires a medical and psychological exam.
Where do you do the testing for the agility?
Physical agility is over at Rio Honda College. They've been gracious enough for many years now to host us on a Saturday morning. So they pretty much administer it. We score it and pass them along and give them their oral interview time. Now with this budget slider, here on the left is our general fund. And on the right is our different funding, which is Measure S and Measure D. It just really shows you the importance of Measure S and Measure D as far as being able to grow our department to the size that we're now authorized. Just even talking about some of the positions, we also were given two. We were authorized two different community service officers in last year's budget or this current year's budget. And we're looking for two more parking enforcement. So if you add those two, and that's basically 21 new full-time employees, which is a great thing for us for growing and expanding our department. But you see, without Measure S and Measure D, it would not have been possible. So we're extremely grateful and thankful to the citizens for approving both Measure S and Measure D and allowing us to have the growth that we desperately needed. Finally, for our goals for next year, one of the things that we're constantly hearing is our traffic safety. So we applied and once again received a grant through OTS, Office of Traffic and Safety, for I believe it's $325,000. This allows us to go out and target a lot of these different types of things. Not just the speeders, but it also has, we have five different DUI checkpoints that are included in that grant. DUI saturation patrols. There's different distracted drive-in operations, so that'd be like your handheld devices. There's motorcycle safety operations, bicycle and pedestrian operations, street racing. And then there's kind of like a wild card, which is probably more for our speed enhancement. But that's a great way right now. Right now, we are authorized seven motor officers. We're short one right now with staffing. So we're hoping to get that filled here in the next month or two. And then like I said, with the Measure D position, that would get us to eight. And then we're even looking at to expand that and transferring one of our positions to be able to do that and increase that. But that's been a great program for us. We've had it for several years. It's grown probably the last 10 years from probably being in the low $20,000 now to $325,000. And it's been great that the states continue to give us that year after year. The other thing is to continue our footbeat deployment in downtown area. Right now, we're staffing this on Fridays and Saturday evenings in the downtown. It's from 8:30 PM to 2 AM. We have two different officers. It's extremely important. As the downtown has grown, the number of establishments selling alcohol has grown tremendously. And when we talk about just the downtown too, we're not talking just north of Firestone. We're also talking about the south of Firestone and west of Downey. There's a lot of other establishments there as well. You guys see our weekly updates that are coming in. And it's literally, it almost seems every week, we're having to detain somebody. A lot of them ends up in the use of force type thing. But there's a lot of that going on and spilling out in the streets right now. And having these two people dead decay down there is ensuring the safety of the people that aren't causing the problems, that are just there to enjoy themselves and do the right thing and be able to have a good time. That is one position that with some of the Measure D spots, as we get to full staff, that I've at least explored, being able to have a permanent downtown detail. Somebody that's, the officer's working down there. And then also obviously encompassing some of the other ABC violations and things like that. Those currently are being handled. The ABC stuff is currently being handled by our special enforcement team, who obviously I want to be able to focus on hiring and recruitment. But it is vitally important for us to have somebody down there dedicated to that downtown area because if we don't have that and all of our officers are tied up in other calls, then we're not going to have anybody there to respond in a timely manner.
Can I interject? You had mentioned it. I know the downtown footbeat is really critical. And you say it's till 2 AM, but I hear there's a lot of activity after that. Has there been discussion to keep it open longer?
I'm sorry, it does go till 2:30 now. I apologize.
Or even more.
It's a six-hour shift. So obviously, the bars, generally the last call, they're going to be at 1:30 or 1:45, depending on when they have their CUP established. So we see the biggest period is at 1:30 to 2 AM. And as everybody's dispersing, so they are there till 2:30 now. They initially were there till 2, they're there till 2:30 now.
Last call, is it 30 minutes before closing?
Some of them are at 1:30, some are at 1:45. And yeah, I know.
No, all I suppose is our 12.
Yeah. Most of them, I believe, are at 1:30. I don't want to put community development on the spot.
And that fluctuates because of the choice of the owner? Or there's not a state regulation 30 minutes before closing?
I'm just trying to remember. There's not a state regulation on it? I go back on when I was sitting here in planning commission meetings. And I remember it came up with one of the establishments on Firestone. And I think they were grandfathered into it based on their CUP and when it was, because they're all 1:45. I believe all the other, the recent ones are 1:30 now. And then the final thing I have just to cover is we start up our crime impact team again. And we're deploying that and kind of trying to use our JAG grant money on that. The JAG grant money only goes so far. I believe last year, the last three years, we've only gotten $27,000 from the JAG grant. So we're kind of using some of our own regular overtime to supplement that. But what we're really trying to do is as we have a troublesome area and it's been given to us, I need to be able to put people out there to attack the problem instead of lingering around. And just with the patrol officers, they're inundated with their day-in, day-out calls. Being able to have a specific team out there to go address a problem has been tremendous. And I won't give specific locations, but there was one in this current year where we're having a lot of problems at some apartments off of Imperial. And literally, we put that team out there and that problem has left. It kind of went to a different part of the city for a little bit. But then guess what? We used them for that same spot and we kept making arrests there and keep pushing that element out of there.
What's that acronym stand for?
JAG.
Judicial something grant?
Yeah, Judge Advocate, not Judge Advocate. I've been saying JAG grant for probably 20 years on it. I can get you the acronym, what it is later. But it's been a great program for us. We've had the crime impact team in the past. And a lot of times they'll come to budget and budget mountain, having that money for the overtime. So instead of, we can use that JAG grant money for that. So instead of using it for something else, we're really using that to be able to focus on something that's really going to impact the community and get that element out of the neighborhoods. And it's been a great program so far. And again, that's another one of those ones with staffing where, yeah, I'd love to have a regular two-person crime impact team, kind of working hand in hand with our gang team and our specialized units to really be able to go out there and be proactive and address these situations before they become bigger and turn into bigger events and things like that. So with that, that concludes my portion. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Mayor Potem Pepperton, I just wanted to share, so the JAG grant stands for the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant.
Justice Assistance Grant, okay, thank you.
Thank you, chief.
All right. Please, the council will ask, fire chief to come forward.
And that's a federal type of a grant?
Good afternoon, Mayor Sosa, members of the city council. It's my absolute pleasure to share with you a little snapshot of Downey Fire Department and some of the things that we've accomplished this year and where we look to go in 2026. There we go. Didn't think we were going anywhere. The Fire Department, as you know, we're responsible for providing comprehensive fire and life safety services to the expanding needs of our community. Comprised of nine different divisions, we work cohesively to identify, mitigate, and respond to risks throughout our community. Each of these divisions assumes a different perspective and has a slightly different goal. But ultimately, we work towards one common mission. From fire prevention to almost 12,000 emergency responses in the last calendar year, Downey Fire is focused on achieving our mission with professionalism and competence. 2024 was a banner year, I'm sorry, 2024, 2025 was a banner year for DFD. We accomplished a great deal. And a little sneak preview in the upper right corner is our brand-new fire truck. This is something that's been several years in the making and we just took delivery of it. We're looking to put it into service very, very soon. This is a huge investment in public safety in the city. And it's something that's going to serve our community for the next 20 to 25 years. We also chose to focus heavily on the physical and mental well-being of our members. On the physical well-being side of our membership, we went after federal grants. And we were able to replace all of our respiratory protection equipment. That's the first line of defense for our firefighters in protecting them. The cutting-edge equipment that we got and we're rolling out as we speak today, it's going to protect our firefighters anytime they enter a fire or hazardous atmosphere. And realizing that the mental health is equally as important to physical, we've taken great strides to improve our department's mental health program. That includes additional access to clinicians, a dedicated peer support team, and bringing in outside resources to help support our members when they need help the most. In addition to our membership, we, as Mr. Bradley mentioned earlier, we have our in-house communication center. This is the project listed here. The upgrading our computer-aided dispatch is something that affects more than Downey. It affects over a quarter of a million people in the cities of Downey, Compton, and Santa Fe Springs. And we have brought in the latest technology for providing computer-aided dispatch. And that includes everything from 911 calls coming in to sending units out in the field and maintaining communication while they're on emergency scenes. Along with that facility upgrade, we've also enhanced physical security at all four of our fire stations. From capital improvement projects that improves the physical security, higher fencing, keeping people out of our stations, to camera systems, we're taking great strides in improving the security of our facilities.
Chief, on that note, can I ask, under the Measure S, when the stations were remodeled, this was an area that was not addressed? Or maybe now even down the road, there's even bigger and better types of security issues?
A little bit of both. We realized after having a two-story fire station, that higher fencing is needed. We have apartments that have been built next door to some of our stations or houses that have been expanded. And when we have, we had a five-foot block wall, and it wasn't the best in security. The fire station on Imperial, for instance, had a short wall off of Adenmore. And we found that we needed something a little higher to provide for security. We were getting people jumping over the fence. And this gave us what we needed. And it wasn't addressed in the Measure S expansion of a couple of years ago.
So they're out on a call, right?
That's exactly it.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Snapshot of our budget for 2026. We have a total combined budget of just over $33 million. As I mentioned earlier, I value our personnel as our strongest asset. And that takes up 77% of our total budget, and we want to take care of them. For personnel, we have 111 full-time positions. And of those, we have 68 sworn members and 43 civilian. The 68 sworn, 63 are actually riding on apparatus responding to emergency incidents. And we have five support staff who either work in fire administration or they hold a 40-hour position that supports our emergency medical program as well as training. The remaining 23% of our budget is what we need to provide the tools and equipment and industry professionals to carry out our duties. This includes supporting some of our operations through capital improvements, like the station's security programs and some more that I will get to in just a moment. 2026 is going to be another great year for DFD. Starting it off, we are actively involved in the accreditation process. Similar to the assessment that the police department just concluded, this is an internationally recognized designation that very few fire departments in the state or the country have. It takes a deep dive and it's a 360-degree assessment of our operations, our staffing, and how it compares to the unique risk that we have in Downey. The output of this project is going to be a strategic plan. And it's something that we've never had in DFD's history. And it's going to help guide our actions and our decisions for the next five to 10 years. In keeping up with the latest in technology, everything seems to be moving more techie these days. We're going to be migrating to the National Emergency Response Information System. Every time that we run a call, information from that call is placed into a database. Downey is going to be one of the lead agencies in the region in migrating to this new system. It gets uploaded to the U.S. Fire Administration. And at the end of the year, it's going to allow us to compare our results and our responses to national trends, to make decisions that better guide our department into the future. I mentioned earlier that we have just taken delivery of our new fire truck, while a 63, three-foot-long truck needs a place to go. We're going to be expanding our training facility to train up our firefighters to serve the community in the best possible way. And as we do that, we're also going to be building a structure to house our reserve apparatus. These are tremendous investments that the city makes in its safety. And we want to be able to prolong the life of these and maintain them throughout the life of their usable service life.
So we're keeping the old other one?
We are keeping the old truck and it's going to be a huge asset.
Call it classic, not old.
Chief, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
In your goals and objectives, there's a bullet point, the one to the last. Market Downey Fire Communications Center to regional fire agencies with the intention of bringing in additional revenue through expanded services. Can you elaborate on that? What does that mean exactly?
Absolutely. Currently, we dispatch for Compton, Downey, and Santa Fe Springs. Each independent city that has their own fire department has to choose a communication center that they're connected with. When the phone rings or somebody calls 911, where does that call go? We are actively looking at other potential cities that we would like to dispatch for. We're going to start, we're going to begin that focus in our operational area, which are the cities immediately adjacent to Downey, and expand out from there. Obviously, the geographic distance is something that we need to be considered. But with technology these days, that communication can happen at much greater distances. And as we seek to grow, we're going to expand our staffing and start pursuing some of these other cities.
Does that mean, again, we would have to increase our own staffing to ensure that our immediate calls don't go on hold?
Absolutely. And that would be, again, our primary focus. Because just like with the Fire Department, there are certain standards for call dispatching, call-taking. And we would maintain a close eye on those to make sure that we're still providing the top service.
How many cities do we service?
Currently, three.
Three. And then would Downey being the fourth?
Downey is one of the three. And we would be looking to expand that up to potentially four to five.
You mentioned we have 63 sworn firefighters. Are we short any or do we have any positions to fill?
We currently have two vacancies in one engineer and one in the firefighter rank. And with forecasted vacant, or I'm sorry, forecasted retirements and long-term injuries, we're looking at potentially doing a recruitment towards the end of this calendar year.
All right, thanks, chief.
Thank you, chief.
Please, the council move forward to our quality of life section and bring forward Parks and Recreation Director.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the City Council, a little under the weather, so I apologize for my voice. Parks and Recreation, we will do a little snapshot of who we are, what we've been doing and what we're looking to do. Our divisions are broken down into administration, which is my office, oversees budget CIP projects and grants, our facilities and events, our fee-supported programs, those are camps, aquatics, our sports programs and our contract classes. And then we have our golf course operations, transit, theater, and cemetery. Our essential service is really that last line there that our staff is committed to providing services that strengthen our community's image, provide a sense of belonging, and increase our public engagement and promote health and wellness. Everything that we do and add, we really try to make sure that it fits within that guiding principle of what we're doing and how we we get it done. Some accomplishments that we had this year, we are on a multi-year plan to install security cameras at our different park sites. This last year, this year, we were able to accomplish that at three different sites. Barbara J. Riley Community and Senior Center interior cameras, Apollo Park exterior cameras, and Golden Park actually will begin this week and will be done in the next three weeks for exterior cameras there as well. So we're very excited about that. We've actually been able to use it on multiple occasions in either assisting PD or assisting other things that we're looking for somebody coming through a building or where they might have gone, things that happened after hours. It would also helped us assist our after-hours security. We were able to identify where certain individuals might hang out at certain park sites after hours so that security could know where that is. And then also just check up on different things that we get reports of later on that were damaged, broken, anything like that, we're able to do that. So we've been very successful so far and we look forward to the next year's budget as well as continuing that project. We completed our preliminary design with construction drawings for a second dog park. That dog park will be about 2,800 square feet, just a little bit bigger than what we currently have over at Rio San Gabriel. Our next steps will be that this summer, we will be having community meetings over at Golden Park. And then we will also be holding some community meetings at our concerts in the park. We will have an opportunity for people to be able to stop by our booth, give their input into the kind of apparatuses that we're having, the kind of the fencing, the distance, stuff like that. So the hopes are that we can start construction in the winter and have a grand opening in the beginning of 2026. So we're excited about that. We took the tour of Downey historical sites and Christmas tour from this council and we made it happen. We executed an awesome event. We had three different tours of 133 people that did the historical tours. Again, major shout out to the Downey Conservancy for being a great partner in that as they led the tour guides around that. And then we had 100 people separate from that for the Christmas lights via the double-decker bus. So to see the stories and the positive impact that it had of people being to be able to see that driving down Firestone or Paramount, it was good for that. And we have a lot of people who, of course, felt like they missed it and want to have it again next year. So we do have it budgeted again this year to make sure we can continue that process. So it was a very successful one.
To have it sell out like in like 30 minutes, it was like we had a rock band, like the Stones were in Downey or something.
When I was getting, when I was, yeah, when you guys were getting texts, I was getting texts.
And thanks for accommodating and adding again, that was a good, great idea we all had.
One quick question, going back to one of the points you mentioned about having security cameras, how many parks of our in Downey have security cameras after these?
So, well, before this, so so far right now, we have Furman Park that's been completed, Apollo Park and BJR. And then now we will have Golden. And then in our upcoming budget, we have three more parks. It will be Discovery Sports Center, the Rancho Los Amigos Sports Complex, and Independence Park would be the next three. So every year, we're looking to do about three parks.
Only 2 million park visitors?
Yeah, that's it. I just, this lied to me as we go through numbers, I just think it's important, as you guys see all the touchy-feely fun stuff that we do, I really want you guys to see the impact that we have, not only on our city but the region. We had 2 million people visit our parks, we had over 100,000 visitors to our theater, 100,000 visitors to our golf course, 100, over 100,000 to our senior center, and over 90,000 in our transit system. So just the impact that we have community and regionally, just a lot of different things going on in the department and we felt like that was something we wanted to be able to highlight.
I just think you need to do a little more.
We're trying.
I envision, you know, when you're somewhere, they have the clickers counting people that there's somebody in the park.
Absolutely.
Watching people.
These numbers just, wow, they really blow our mind.
The thing we love about it is just what the makeup is, right? Both our seniors, our kids, our families coming to events.
Sports teams.
Outside people coming to our golf course, people after the golf course end up eating in Downey somewhere and just different stuff like that that we kind of transition people into. So we love to be that conduit and community voice and people see us and be a part of it. So definitely.
Jason, on the security cameras, as we install cameras in our parks, is there somebody literally sitting there looking at monitors or are we, what's the purpose? Is it to record?
It records, it records on motion and it allows us to go back and look, but on real time, I can go on my phone right now and see in real time all the different parks that we have currently with cameras, but they're not monitored 24/7 looking for activity. It's more of a recording and be able to go back and see what is there. And then it also allows us on live, being able to go see live what's going on. So on a weekend, we might get a phone call that we have an issue at one of the park sites. We can pull it up on our phone before we send our staff in to make sure it's not a dangerous situation. PD calls us afterwards to ask if we have any footage of an incident that might have happened in a parking lot, something going by, those types of issues.
Can we, can we give PD that access to that live footage or do they have it already?
They have access to it.
Okay, thank you.
And on the subject of cameras, maybe some of you have noticed if you come up to a house, some cameras have a speaking feature. Now, we wouldn't want it when you have activity during the day, but you are being recorded, you know, and after our comment like that, it might be talking to an animal, but for someone that was attempting to do something, for them to hear that, that could be the best deterrent ever.
We actually are looking into that over at Golden Park for the illegal dumping that's going on in the parking lot. The camera that's closest to that will have a pre-recorded message that says that this is being recorded, local authorities are being contacted. There's also a couple of little blind spots or trouble areas that we have that will also have that, that hopefully aren't, they aren't too close to any residents, but makes sense for deterring any problems we might have had.
And what about Rio San Gabriel? I know being so close to the riverbed and the increase in transient activity, I know residents right up against the park have expressed some concerns. So what about cameras and something with that feature as well?
I think over the next year, the North End, yeah, over the next year, as we complete that project and the renovations, cameras will be included in that. I think we will have more voice-activated features over there as well, especially towards the dealership side, along the buildings, a little bit away from the residence, only because we don't want to be in someone's backyard with it, but yes, definitely along the shelters and the dog park as well. Moving on to just some budget highlights, you can see here, this is our completed budget, a little over about $17 million. Of that, the majority of it, about $11 million comes from other funds, they are not general funds. So this is the golf course and transit are the majority of those funds that come into our department. We do have, sorry, we have 11 full-time positions that are in our department as well. Some goals and objectives, so as Councilmember Fermeto was talking about, one of our goals, we have some park projects this year that we are looking to get completed. Our grant-funded renovations over at Rio San Gabriel Park, it will include the installation of a new, our first ever all-inclusive playground, parking lot renovations, installation of a walking path, picnic shelter renovations, and dog park upgrades. We have a million-dollar grant from the county and we have an $800,000 grant from Caltrans that we've had for about two or three years now. And as City Manager mentioned, we're in a bit of a snag with the county right now and some environmental, Public Works has done a great job in helping us try to push through that. Because it used to be a landfill, they are pushing for some more extensive testing. Just the application to get to the testing has taken us seven months, just for the application. So we're trying to get through it best we can and hope to get that going. Completing the construction of a community garden at Rio San Gabriel, we are ready for that option to go. It's already been constructed, or I'm sorry, it's already have the plans ready and it's similar along with the plan set for Rio San Gabriel Park. Completing the construction of a second dog park over at Golden Park, I think we mentioned that a little bit, you can see a graphic here. This is one of the layouts that we have with both a small and the large dog park. Very excited, looks, it fits over there very great, it'd actually be a great addition to that. Continuing the search for locations for a potential splash pad and pocket park. Currently, we have a couple of locations, we're looking at Brookshire Park and looking at upgrading the picnic shelters that are there and seeing how how big of an adaptive, as Assistant City Manager De Rojas said, we're trying to make it an adaptive, inclusive splash pad, so there's a certain amount of space that we need for that. So we are looking for that as well as a space in downtown Downey, the city's parking lot over by the AAA parking lot, that's also a spot that we are looking at being able to either include that as a splash pad or make that a pocket park. Both of those, someone looking at.
I'm not sure if I emailed you this, but a resident or somebody recommended in front of the Space Center where we have our veterans memorial, sometimes the ground is a little soggy there. I don't know if that would be a good place for a splash pad, you already have the parking.
We can look into it. It's already soggy, we'll take it out and put in cement. I think we have to look at the plans that the Space Center has for the expansion project and what they're going to be doing, if anything new is going to be over there, but we can definitely look at it.
Because, I mean, if you have kids there for the splash pad, maybe they'll go in and take advantage of all the STEM activities that we're going to be doing.
Ben's gonna love a bunch of wet kids running around the Space Center. But we will definitely, yeah, we're definitely looking at different locations for it. And then aside from that, we're still continuing to explore grants for our park renovations. Next up on the list is Treasure Island. We have walking trail picnic shelters that need to be redone, the playground needs to be redone over there, the trash can and amenities need to be upgraded to match the existing, better lighting. As we've mentioned to the council before, one of our goals is Measure S did a great job in doing a lot of big things, but there was a lot of little things it was, it was not able to get done. So we are going back, one of those being just simple is making sure all of our trash cans are the same and all of our picnic tables are the same and all of our benches are the same. So next on that list is Treasure Island in Brookshire. Those are the two that don't have the same picnic shelters, they don't have the same trash cans, they don't have some of the same amenities, so that's next on our list to get done as we look at those.
It's a pretty big area, I think it's like 300 homes over there.
Yeah. You say that we're looking forward to explore grants to upgrade our parks, given the state of how the, you know, the county or the state is going, how possible are we able to get these grants or help to build up our parks?
I'll say luckily for us, the LA County grant through Prop A, which the initiative was done six or seven years ago, they have money every year coming out of property and sales tax that go towards this specifically and that money will not be touched. So that part is good for us, they both have an annual allocation that we get and they also have competitive funding cycles that we can apply for. One of those was the million dollars that we got for Rio San Gabriel because of the demographics in that area made us a little bit more competitive. So I still think we have a good shot at that. The federal or state funding, we're probably going to have to look at, you know, there's going to be a decrease there. At that time, we'd come back to the council with what it would cost to finish those park projects and see where we are with grant funding and see if the council wanted to entertain any other funding sources once we have those estimates ready.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
And then just down, we have the transition of the Park Ranger program is going to be going from the Police Department over to Parks and Recreation. We're going to be working on filling that, working with those individuals to help us at the parks with some of the the smaller problems that we have, unregulated parties, dogs off of leashes, any kind of conflict we might have at a park site, something like that that we can have the Park Rangers respond to and help us out with that.
And will they be a minimum of a certain age in a sense?
18 and over is what they're trying to get there and a lot of them will probably end up losing to PD hopefully eventually, that they want to become a police officer. So they come in, they start there and hopefully move over years to come.
And how many will we have Park Rangers full-time or are they part-time?
They're part-time and we have six positions that are budgeted, I believe, so that's what we're looking. Right now, we have one that's filled, we had another one, they got a full-time job over in PD, so that's good, they got a promotion. So we're going to be looking at that recruitment, actually, right now, we have that recruitment going on, so we're trying to get that filled.
The Park Rangers, will they have any type of tools available to them?
They will have, currently, right now, they'll have vehicles and radios. We're looking at the type of certification they need to also be able to cite for certain things, parking issues or other issues in the park, we're still working on that part of it, but those will be the tools that they have. We have some old PD vehicles that we were able, Public Works was able to restore and put in that will be dedicated to the Park Rangers. They'll get trained on the police radios for dispatch and stuff like that.
Thank you. And I don't know, I should have asked the chief, but are my, the security that's going through our parks, how's that going?
It's been positive on our end. They do a good job of reporting to us as well as Public Works. They submit a work order through our app, actually, for any graffiti or things that they see broken, they will get in touch with us and send us a report every week of any homeless encounters they might have had, so we can get that over to Economic Development. They've been good partners in our end, they've actually let us know about some things that were happening, especially the stuff we wanted them to, the fence getting cut over at Rancho Los Amigos over on the backside of Casuela, people will go back there and cut a hole in there, we're able to get that fixed a lot sooner or they're able to deter a lot of that. Cars left in parking lots, a lot of different topics that we've had problems with that they've been good in being proactive and helping us with.
Have you considered that fence is a chain link?
It's chain link.
Have we considered going to a more durable, sturdier material?
I think that's something we're going to have to look at here in the future, getting something a little thicker grade in that area, trying to even deter with some planting and stuff like that, so it's not as easily accessible.
I actually want to expand on that question that Councilman Trujillo was talking about. I know there's a lot of locations throughout the city that have chailing fences that get cut up. I know I spoke into Roger in regards to those, specifically it's Caltrans area, but we're not going to put any type of budget right now to, at least in our end, places that we can control to put these more fortified places.
Yeah, no, we, for our locations, we also can look at other things like mogunvelio, plants and things of that nature that deter people at a much cheaper rate, but absolutely have the ability to take action when we need to. So if there are budget issues that Jason has and he needs to address with a more high-quality fence, we'll find a way to take care of that.
And going to Councilmember Ortiz's question, would those be in the Public Works budget? These fences, he's talking about the Caltrans ones?
The Caltrans would be in Caltrans budget, that's their, that's their expense. They, they won't let us change it or touch it, that's basically something that they do with their property. So the ones that he's talking about is access to like Caltrans right of way and other parts of the city. It's actually not city property.
Kim, well, is there any way we could enter into a partnership with the state to say, look, let's change the chain link fencing to this more durable thing and we'll contribute towards it?
We actually did just that, as a matter of fact, and they declined the offer, so.
Who declined it? Did we call Blanca? Councilmember Ortiz, you should call Assemblywoman Pacheco. Thank you.
Interesting, and state declined?
Yes, that's correct, they turned us down.
That actually concludes my section and I can answer any questions.
I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Dog park renovation, Rio San Gabriel, where are we at with that?
That'll be a part of the the park project that's happening over there, the one that's getting held up right now, that's included in the actual project.
Okay.
So we'll be redoing the fencing and the surface that's over there.
Okay. With all the investment we're making in Rio San Gabriel, is it fair to say that we still do not have a permanent solution for the sinking, if you will, of the top soil?
To some areas, I think once we get down there, we're going to see it a little bit more. The one thing we're not able to touch right now are the athletic fields during Measure S, because there was some testing done and that was going to be the most expensive kind of elaborate system that needed to be done there. So you'll see that we're kind of touching the exterior of the park around where the landfill actually wasn't there. The landfill was in the center of where the actual baseball fields are. So right now, we're going to be okay with where we're at. There's some additional stuff in the playground area that the plans call for with cement and higher grading that'll allow us to not have that same settlement. The baseball field in the future, when we look to redo that field, that's when we're going to hit some, some problems and some expensive solutions for that one because of what we're going to have to do to, for the soil there.
My concern is in Rio San Gabriel, that permanent solution, that the longer we wait, the more expensive it's going to be. What's the number that we have from the last time we looked at it? Would the permanent solution cost us?
I think during Measure S, when we floated it in 2016, it was $7 million. So, and this is for the baseball field, currently, we have two large baseball fields that face each other. In redoing that to make it an athletic complex, you'd probably put a snack bar in the center and make four smaller fields going out. So to redo that, you're looking probably now close to $9 or $10 million.
Okay.
Like pouring concrete to kind of solidify.
That was the idea, that the center would be concrete in a building so that that's not a playing field and it wouldn't move as much, and now the ball fields would be a little bit more on the outskirts, heading outwards.
When, and it's just a guesstimate, the second dog park, the one at Golden Park, when do you think we're going to be able to open that realistically?
Hopefully, construction in the winter and groundbreaking in early '26.
Okay, and how about the same question as to the garden?
Ooh, that one's a little harder for us to answer right now because of the county and what we're going through with the, that's over at Rio San Gabriel as well, so that's caught up in the same. So that's caught up in the same issue that we have with the county and the health department.
So the reason why we're still continuing with this identify location for the garden is because we believe it is going to happen. It's just going to take some time?
Correct. It's a part of the overall renovation project over at Rio San Gabriel.
Okay. Thank you.
Two quick questions. Back to the new dog park at Golden, and I see the rendering here doesn't have any shade or trees, but if there are trees in that area that we try not to remove them, that we do have a shade area or something to that nature?
Yeah, luckily it builds in, there's a big hill over there. If you guys kind of picture that hill, that hill will get removed in the dirt, but there are no trees there in that area. We actually will maintain the big trees that are there for the shade. The seating will actually be in that area right underneath the trees so that we have built in shade there.
That sounds good. And if you go back to the budget highlights, I had on my, my sheet 24 full time positions, but your sheet showed 11. That's a different.
I think there was just a typo earlier. I would love 24 positions if we want to talk about adding that. I am here for that, but 11 is our actual number.
It's really 11? Okay. That was a test. Did I pass?
You passed. You're looking at it.
No, I just want to say thank you, Jason. We know you have a small but mighty team in looking at the, at the numbers and everything that your, that your team does in terms of community engagement and programming. It's, it's really outstanding. And so just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Kudos.
Thank you, Jason.
Councilmember Trujillo, I did wanted to add to the item you related to Rio San Gabriel Park. So as part of the city's legislative platform, Rio San Gabriel Park is actually one of the priority items. So each year we do submit it with that range that Jason had mentioned between the eight to 10 million to vote federal and state funding. So hopefully we can try to get those monies to move forward with the project.
Thank you, Vani.
Please, the council, we'll move forward with the Space Center presentation.
Are you smiling with the splash pad at Discovery?
Especially in the summertime, I'd love to be in a splash pad. Well, good afternoon. Thanks for having me up here. I'm going to go through the Space Center first. The Space Center is here. Our mission is to ignite communities of creative and critical thinkers. That's the basis of what STEM education is all about. And we're here to bring people together around that and provide experiences and practice and skill building and things like that. We also are the leading preserver of Down East history. It's major aerospace history. We have an extensive art, art, sorry, archive. And, and over the past year, we've been professionalizing the, the upkeep of that archive in anticipation of more storage in the new building. We have four full time staff. They are not divided up into our divisions. These are more divisions of work, but obviously we have our operations, which includes reservations, retail and membership reservations. We, all the field trips, all the rentals of the space, things like that. Our programming, which is sort of the heart of what we do, our educational programming, our exhibits and our extensive events. Our educational programming, by the way, that's, we provide curriculum support and original curriculum for doing hands-on STEM education throughout LA, throughout the region. I'm going to get into some of our partnership programs, but we do that with LUSD, Downey Unified, YMCA's, things like that. And then obviously admin kind of pulls it together with marketing, communications or fundraising and then budgets and, and also partnerships, which is kind of the way that that four person full time staff is able to actually make impact is by partnering with other organizations out there in greater Los Angeles to, to scale up what we do. This year has been busy as always. As of April, these are some of our numbers and we're on track to get to our nearly 100,000 visitors a year, which is what we've done for the past few years. But really the big accomplishment was moving the space shuttle for the first time in 20 years. That thing moved from the Public Works yard down the street into a temporary location. Thank you all for being there and riding and making my dream come true of riding in a golf cart down the street in front of the space shuttle. It was a great day. It was super great. It was super fun. Exactly. I didn't kill anybody. I drove in a straight line. That was great.
With that picture, we should have put you in the nose of the front of the space shuttle, right? You should have been right in the front.
I'll get there someday. We got not, not just local coverage, but national coverage on this move. It was a great way to announce the project to the world and to show people what we're all about and what we're going to do. And then out long after that, we celebrated the 15th birthday of the space shuttle, the Space Center, which was a big deal for us, right? It's, it's been around. It's established. We have a brand now. We're, we're a regional leader. I sit on several local committees, talking about the, sort of the future of STEM education in LA. And that's all because of the hard work of staff and what we've been able to do over the years to kind of raise our profile. It's a bunch of other things we've done. I mentioned, we do a lot of STEM programming, both in the building and outside of the building. We have an extensive, extensive outreach program. We participate in this regional STEM education initiative that works with LUSD. I think this semester we were at about 50 different elementary schools in the district doing after school STEM programming. And again, we also do that with community based partners like the YMCA and Heart of LA and a few others. And now we're going to be starting a similar program with Downey Unified this summer or this, this coming school year. Downey Unified also makes extensive use of our field trip program. All the kids come through, things like that. And of course, City of STEM is our big premier event. It's now become the official science festival of LA County, which I like to remind everybody is the largest county in the country. So what we're doing is we're, we're providing STEM to the most people in the biggest place in the United States. Yeah, which is great. Exactly. I always say a little old space center, but we're doing it.
There's a lot of smart kids out there, especially at that science center that you were at.
Yeah, yeah, there's, yeah, there's a lot of kids and they're all excited about STEM. And we try to, you know, ignite that and keep that fire going. Here's our budget. As Vani had mentioned, we're a Fund 24 organization within the, or department, I guess, within the organization. This budget is a pretty flat from last year with some slight increases, but it's going to allow us to be able to make good on what we're doing next year, which is our goals and objectives. And the biggest one being to begin the construction of the new building. In, before the end of this year, we'll have a groundbreaking for the new building. We're finalizing right now, construction drawings. The design is done. It very much looks like that. It's going to go through the whole process. We'll get contractors on board and we'll start raising some steel and pouring some concrete early next year. During that time and sort of parallel process, we're going to be finalizing exhibit and experience plans for what's going to happen within the building. Also starting the renovation of the shuttle. The shuttle's in a temporary location. As you guys know, it's being evaluated right now structurally and, you know, just kind of what's it like? How much work are we going to have to do on this thing? That building also needs a fire suppression system, which is getting finalized right now too. So you'll be seeing more activity in that building into the fall as that rehabilitation plan and the fire suppression system kind of come online. Of course, we have a 501(c)(3) foundation that's attached to the Space Center that helps with fundraising. It's been primarily doing fundraising through corporate sponsorships for events like City of STEM. Now it's gearing up to being, you know, large gifts for the, for the expansion project. So that continues to go. We're going to be launching several campaign activities over the summer and getting ready for the fall giving season for before the end of the year. Hopefully next year we'll start exploring a rebrand of the Space Center as we start thinking about the operational changes that are going to happen with the new building. We might want to dust off our look and feel and see how we communicate to the public. And then of course, you know, as part of the fundraising effort, we need to expand the Space Center's board. It's great. It's a strong board, but in order for us to be the sort of, well, we're already a world class institution, the university, the universe class institution that we expect to be, we'll have to expand that board into the double digits or more. That's the Space Center. Any questions? Perfect. All right. Now the Downey City Library. The Downey City Library is, when I was given the opportunity to, to lead both organizations, we stitched together the mission. So the mission of the library is also the mission of the Space Center, which is to ignite community of creative and critical thinkers. At the library, we provide both physical and digital media and materials to the public for free, including, and which we've really spent a lot of time on over the past years, is including learning programs. So programs in the, in the library and in outreach programs. We're also there as a place to assist the public. We have our veterans, our veteran service center there. People can come in and ask us all kinds of questions and our staff is really great at trying to provide answers. Also, as of April, we've been seeing a steady uptick on users of the library and its services, services. We're, this was a couple of months ago. We were almost at 200,000 visitors. Our library cards, so this isn't library cards overall. There are tens of thousands of library cards for the Downey City Library floating around out there, but just this year, up till April, we've issued about 4,500. We started, we have two apps going. One is a, was an app that the staff uses. They're able to go out to different outreach experiences and sign people up for library cards where they're at. So that's gained about 3,000 library cards this year. Physical items continue to circulate. Our digital items though are continuing to, to go up in usage. That includes eBooks. We offer a ton of online classes, things like that. And then we are doing more programs and, and more events. So you'll see an increase in the attendance there. This year we have expanded the Downey One Card Program so that now all Downey Unified students who have a student ID can use that as a library card. We don't need to have two cards floating around out there. Like I said, we finalized the library app with a public facing app in a beta stage right now. And then we increased the scope of our Beyond the Book Festival, which is kind of slowly but surely becoming the Southeast LA's sort of maker slash art festival that's attached to sort of local culture. That's going to happen in September.
What's the name of that?
Beyond the Book.
September?
Yep. We don't have an exact date. It's going to be around September 27th.
Everyone's asking on the coffee stand, right? So that's good to see that.
It's coming up. Yeah, I'm just going to skip the, Dorothy, for you, I'll just skip right through budget because that's kind of boring. Anyway, we have eight full time staff and many part time staff to help us out. Also, library budget's relatively flat compared year over year. But for our goals and objectives, yes, we're going to have the coffee cart come back. The, the RFP is out there and we're excited to be able to bring some refreshment to, to the Civic Center. Obviously, City Hall staff is excited too. We're going to be exploring to, developing a new children's play area in the library. I don't know if you guys can picture the children's area, but there's a little sort of alcove to the right. It was always designed to be a place for our youngest visitors and we're going to try to build some custom play equipment for them. In a past life in my career, I used to design children's and science museums and this is something that I've been hoping to, to bring to the library. And I know our staff is really excited about it.
Could you elaborate on that? Because I have a big question mark. You know, in my day, the library was quiet and there was no food. And, and now I'm like, we have a play area? I mean, is it for like one year olds, two year olds while the other kids are looking at books with the parents? I mean, we're not changing it into Chuck E. Cheese or something here.
Well, that would be great for revenue if we were Chuck E. Cheese, but we're not going to be Chuck E. Cheese.
Distracting the others, that's why.
But don't say that too loud because I know we're getting a mascot and the mascot and Chuck E. Cheese concept could merge. But no, you know, in the redo of the library that came online after the Measure S, we really flipped the script on what the library is all about. It's very much a louder, more lively place inside the library. We do have, if you walk into the library, the right side is much more sedate. That's where all the books are in the collection. It's set up for sort of quiet study, but two thirds of the library from the, from the lobby on, that's all supposed to be a place where you work, you meet with people, you have conversations, you interact, you do things. The children's area has always been more lively and this is going to allow them to be more focused. So when I say play area, it's, learning through play is the way that kids learn best. And we as designers can design very intentional ways that kids can learn lessons through play by providing an environment and tools for them to do that. And that's what we're going to do there.
Would you say explore a rebrand of the library?
Yes.
Is this what you're talking about? Because I know that our, our old timers, if you look at libraries around, you know, people have gone through a.
Rebirth.
Yeah.
You know, now it's not just that, you know, complete science. It's this, yes, there is an area for study and, and focus and concentration, but then as you've said, there's also an area to collaborate and, and work on, on projects, be more lively. Is that what you mean by rebrand of the library?
Yeah, I think it's, you know, part of the branding process to kind of really think about who you are and what you want to be and what you want to communicate out to the world. And we definitely want to make people aware that this is a place that you can have relationships with people, like to engage with other people and engage with learning. That's what we're hoping to get at from there.
And one more thing, I know that some residents have asked, at some point are we, would we think about having limited opening hours on Sunday? I know the Cerritos Library and in others, in other places do have libraries open on Sundays.
This comes up, this has come up a few times and it came up in the last council meeting. We've done an analysis and the cost doesn't seem to work out for that. For the amount of folks who would come to the library for the hours that we'd be able to offer, the, the amount of money it would take to spend on that doesn't seem to, to work out, but it's obviously something that we can keep doing, keep analyzing and, you know.
Can we consider, I'm sorry, can we consider opening the library on Sundays during finals for the high schools and the surrounding colleges? I think it would be within a month. I don't know if we could consider opening them up seasonal, you know, just when we know that the kids are studying hard.
I'm thinking summer, my, my pilot was summer.
And only because, as we've talked about with BJR as a part of our cooling centers, right? BJR and, and the library are our two cooling centers.
I have, I have some information that I received from staff. I can share with you on the costs and we can talk about that a little more.
Yeah, I'm curious on the cost benefit analysis for that. Thank you.
Sure. I think that's it. I think that's the end of my presentation. Thank you.
I just, I'm looking forward to the coordination, the collaboration between Jason and Park and Rec and the library and the Space Center when the mascot possibly named Apollo will arrive someday. I, I think there's going to be great synergy in terms of the marketing and the branding of the city. So I'm really looking forward to that coordination between space, library and Park and Rec. Thank you.
Yeah. I could see Apollo with a baseball hat and a book and that's all of it together. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
All right, we will bring up Community Model Director for the next presentation, please. Oh, did I jump somebody?
Is it public?
It's Irma. Austin, or Irma?
Austin first.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the time. Following Ben and Jason feels like a setup, but I'm going to do my best.
And how many visitors do you get?
Good evening. I don't see Austin's there.
Oh, okay.
All right, thank you for the time. All right, thank you for the time. Just to start, our Economic Development Office has changed a bit since I started at the city. We've restructured a few things for operational efficiencies and to help improve our compliance with the many grants and grant-funded programs we implement. For our divisions, we have Economic Development, Housing Services and Homelessness Solutions. There's certainly a lot of crossover in those three topics. The Economic Development Division, we work to advance the city's economic vitality by implementing strategic initiatives in economic development, housing services and homelessness solutions that strengthen our local economy, support vulnerable populations and enhance the quality of life of Downey stakeholders. Just to highlight some of our accomplishments from the past year, we were able to advance redevelopment efforts of the back 20. We amended the ground lease there, if you recall. We've provided additional accountability for our development partner as well as some new deliverables. They're ahead of schedule on those deliverables. We are appreciating the progress that's being made there. We'll likely have significant updates for you in the coming year and some new deliverables and accountability attached for the project moving forward. The other thing I wanted to highlight is that we were able to complete 19 housing rehab projects. That's the most projects we've been able to complete in a single year to date. That's even with the program being disrupted by some of the changes in state law. So we're proud of the work our, our teams were able to do there. We also established a homelessness solutions division as well as an interdepartmental homeless team, which we call STEP, which stands for Strategic Team for Engagement and Prevention. Almost every department in the city is, is a part of STEP. It's been a productive and collaborative effort. We've also increased efforts to address homelessness across the board within the city. We hired CityNet to provide outreach and engagement services. That continues to go very well. We've secured beds at the Bell Shelter and expect to secure more beds in the coming year using Measure A funds. We've continued the weekly encampment cleanups in partnership with Community Development, PD and Public Works. And we've partnered with the county on the Clean 105 Corridor Encampment Resolution, which continues to show great results in the lack of activity in the Riverbed. And then just some budget highlights. You'll notice that the total number on, under all other funds is slightly different than what was in your packet. When we pulled the numbers, it did not include $76,000 in PLHA funds and an additional half million dollars in Measure A funds. So the 3.863 million figure you see there is, is increased because of that. On the general fund side, about 15% of our total budget was within the general fund. For general operations, just to note, because that number does look a bit higher than usual, that includes $143, $140,000 in subsidy loan payments from some previous economic development projects. But overall, we're looking at a total budget of $4.5 million with the majority of our office being funded through PLHA, CDVG and Home as well as some Measure D and Measure A funds. And then as we look ahead at the upcoming year, one of the things we're really excited to complete and start implementing is our Economic Development Strategic Plan. We're also ready to continue our business attraction, retention and expansion efforts with a focus on high-quality restaurant, retail and recreation businesses. We're looking forward to making progress in those three sectors. We continue to engage with Union Pacific as well on the variance application to add additional parking to the south side of Firestone. That supports a number of industries and sectors and particularly with our recruitment efforts to be able to offer that additional parking to customers in Downey. In addition to the Economic Development Strategic Plan, we'll also be updating the city's homeless action plan and beginning implementation of that in the upcoming year as well. Happy to answer any questions.
With that, I'll then ask our
Just one comment. Maybe I, I would like for to, if we can do a little more social media connection with our residents of how they can report homeless tents or homeless encampments. I feel like they're a little confused of how they need to approach those situations. I know that we have the app, but after hours, what do they do? Do they call the police department? And I wanted to see if they can do a little more social media.
Happy to do that.
Thank you.
We'll ask Director Wietron to come up, please.
Good evening.
Good evening. The mission of the Community Development Department is to ensure that we enhance and sustain the quality of life in our city by supporting safe, healthy, vibrant neighborhoods and infrastructure. We do this through our four key divisions that are part of the Community Development Department. The Planning Division specifically manages the growth and development in alignment with the city's general plan and our municipal codes. Its focus is to ensure that our policies support the well-being of our residents, visitors, property owners and business life, businesses. The Building and Safety Division oversees construction plans, issues permits and performs inspections. The work that we do ensures that all new construction and reconstruction projects or renovation projects meet safety needs, safety standards and building codes. And the Code Enforcement Division plays a vital role in preserving the integrity and appearance of our neighborhoods and business community. We enforce our codes to help protect property values and quality of life across the city. And finally, the Administration Division manages our contracts and ensures that our department operates in compliance with our approved budgets. We also lead initiatives aimed at streamlining our operations and improving our customer service. I'd like to highlight a few accomplishments over the past year. The Community Development has been continuing to improve our permit tracking software through key technological upgrades, which includes electronic notifications to keep the public better informed on the status of their plan check. And this will go live in the first quarter of next fiscal year, allowing also the streamlining of our internal workflows for greater staff efficiency. And this is done through collaboration with other departments that are also involved in the development review process. And we're also aiming to move, or planning to move our permitting system to the cloud to, for improved performance and accessibility. And we're working with our team in the Community Development Department across other departments and our IT team to make that possible beginning of the fiscal year. And this will ensure that we have a system that is robust, reliable and can better provide customer service for our internal customers and our external customers. I'd also like to highlight that we've kicked off our, our Downey Code Streamlining and Improvement Program this past year by looking at our municipal code and seeing what's outdated, what's not meeting the needs of the community, what's, what needs to change. And I'd like to highlight one of the initiatives that you took a look at and approved this past fiscal year recently, which is the amendment of the liquid Firestone specific plan, which was to allow commercial recreational uses in one of our key quarters of our city, which is ideally located across from the Stonewood Mall. The other item I'd like to highlight is that we've implemented two new housing overlay zones as part of our housing element work, which is part of also of our general plan update. The housing element, housing overlay zones that were approved by the City Council were done in order to, for the city to be able to continue to meet our arena allocations and our requirements to keep our housing element compliant with the state. And we also, as part of that, in partnership with that, we adopted our objective design standards. And these standards are intended to communicate, communicate our design expectations to the development community very clearly, to be more transparent and to leave less guesswork for the developers and the designers. And again, to provide more clarity and checklist that designers can use when, before submitting their projects to the city. And the last item I'd like to highlight is that we've updated, we've launched the update, comprehensive update of our city's general plan for the next 20 years, which includes the establishment of a technical working group of our internal partners across city departments. And as part of that, we're developing historic context statements and continuing with our community, community engagement. Specifically on the general plan includes updating eight elements of our general plan and also two optional elements that touch the subjects of open space, circulation, economic development and design along with others. As part of the general plan, we're also incorporating the establishment of the city's first formal historic preservation program, which includes starting with the development of the historic context statements that will trace the city's development over time and connect it to the neighborhoods and architectural styles across the, the city. Where as, the development guides will be used to showcase prominent styles in our city that will serve as educational tools that can be used by home buyers, by realtors and, but by the broader community of Downey, including at our public counters to help inform the public about the different types of buildings that convey the history of Downey. And to keep the public engaged in our general plan update, we've hosted workshops, pop-up events and used tools like door-to-door hangers, social media and surveys. And we'll also be a host, a part of the Mensa Wellness Fair coming up. And we'll have a booth there to highlight not only our general plan work and the survey, promoting the community survey, but also showcasing the different services that we have available through the Community Development Department. Our, our budget is comprised of largely general funds. We have 24 positions across the four divisions of the department. As you'll see in this slide, the majority of our budget is for the staff services that we are use, city employees and contract services that are involved in the various components of the development reviews. For goals and objectives, we plan to continue with the work of the general plan update, which we will have complete by the spring of 2026. And again, that involves various elements. That's kind of once in a planner's lifetime type of document. It doesn't happen very often. It takes a lot of staff resources, a lot of continuity in the work that we're doing and building and layering upon the different topics and working with the different departments. All departments are, are touching the general plan in some way and so we have the guidance of our internal team to be able to complete that by the spring of 2026. And that also includes the preparation of environmental impact report, which as you know, is the highest level of, of a SEQA document that a, a project can be associated with. So that is a very, very large project that we're excited to be working on currently. We're also being, going to continue working and evaluating our zoning code to see if there's other municipal code that the city can initiate. There's actually more than a handful of code updates that we're currently working on, that we're building the reviews and making sure that we're able to bring an ordinance to our planning commission and eventually to the city council for that. We're also going to be continuing our proactive code enforcement and our collaboration with our partners that have been mentioned this evening, with Police Department, Economic Development, our Homeless Solutions Manager. That's been a very successful program. We're going to continue to implement our vacant properties ordinance along with working with our many shopping centers that have been very collaborative with our enforcement team to be able to update and maintain their shopping centers. From small things like power washing, you might have seen some resurfacing of parking lots, painting of buildings, removal of window signage. That's all the efforts of the code enforcement officers that have taken really that to heart and making sure that they're proactively and also responding to the cases that are reporting to us. And I've touched upon the city's first formal historic preservation program. We're incorporating that as part of our general plan update. Our design element of the general plan already includes a small component related to historic structures in Downey. We're building on that quite a bit by the developing of those statements and we're very excited to bring some tools live soon, including the architectural style guides within the next fiscal year. And that'll be done prior to the completion of the general plan update. And that concludes my presentation. If there's any questions, happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, Irma.
I have, I have some questions. Irma, thank you for your presentation. Every department is essential and is important to our community and to this, to local government. But certainly your department, I've got to tell you, I really appreciate your Community Development Department updates and how informative they are. Certainly you touched on various things that are of importance, one of which is code enforcement. One of the things that we, I think as a council appreciate is making sure that our building management companies that, you know, those strip malls that we see all throughout our city that are being kept, not just clean, but are, are maintained and, and changed. And I know that we've seen upgrades to various strip malls, but with that, I think we just need to continue to do and make sure that all throughout, from the landscaping to everything, everything else and in between. And of course, our, our neighborhoods. I think people in Downey take great pride in their, their homes. And when you see homes that are unkept or, or vacant and things that we've been discussing, I think that brings not only the area blight and, and other issues, but continuing with that code enforcement engagement is really, really important. So thank you, thank you, thank you for that. That, that means so much to us, the council, but also for our residents. That's what we hear about constantly. So if we can continue with that, I think that will, that will go very far for our residents.
I had a question regarding the historic preservation program. I think it's, I'm not taking it in a sense that it's becoming, you're registering your house as a historic house, limiting what the owner can do. It doesn't restrict owners in the sense. Elaborate what that program is. I know we like to keep our historical architecture, but as a homeowner with a bundle of rights, they're able to do what they want to their home, be it a 1950s and remodel. What is this context, just?
Yes, thank you for that question. The Historic Preservation Program and specifically the development of the historic context statements and the architectural style guides is really just an educational tool, just educating the public and the community that, of what the history is in Downey, what was happening during that period of time and how it is the, what's called in the historic world, the built environment? How does the built environment reflect what was happening in those time periods? And that typically is architectural styles, layout of cities, layout of streets. And so it's really just building on the education information and formalizing to be able to garner an appreciation for why the history and the buildings and sites in Downey are important. But it does not include any type of designation. It's just really building on educational tools and just promoting just a voluntary appreciation for history in Downey.
Like our Spanish-style, Mission-style Mediterranean versus a Cape Cod on the East Coast? You're just going to bring in some of the context?
Yes, we're identifying, we're identifying the prominent architectural styles of Downey and then creating these style guides so that folks that might have an appreciation for that architecture have a better understanding of how to restore them voluntarily, if that's what they wanted to do. And so we'll be providing those educational tools.
Are we, are we going to be, are we going to be looking at the vendor enforcement hotspots? I know we're getting into the summer months, but I know there's been an uptick on, on vendors outside of our schools and also getting into the neighborhoods. Are we, how are we handling that?
Yeah, we're collaborating with the police department. There is a special detail where we have specific dates that we've planned ahead of time to go after school, not only at the schools, but also at some of our parks where we're seeing an uptick because the weather is better. And so that's something we do in collaboration with police department just because we find there's oftentimes those vendors are not providing, are not being cooperative with our code enforcement. So it's come to a, a point where we are re-encountering the same vendors. And so because we found that, we found that the collaboration works better. So we're, we're, we get ahead of it through Mother's Day, Valentine's Day, summer weather. We're also adjusting our staffing to be consistent, have more staffing during certain hours where we know there's going to be more of a demand out there due to people being out more.
Sure, and I know with concerts in the park right around the corner, I think we can probably anticipate an increase on that as well.
You're saying there's the same vendors?
We're finding that oftentimes there's some of the same vendors in some of the intersections. Not all the time, but there's oftentimes we're encountering that.
And I know when I, we get the updates, we get the picture of the before and after, but how does the process go? So you, you approach those vendors and you cite them? Or why is it the same vendors for them to say, why?
They oftentimes don't provide their identification or they have identification that we're not able to verify. So there's a lot of times where it results in not being able to issue a full citation. We're taking a different approach where if we find the vehicle that is delivering the, the goods, and I'll use flowers for example, then we're able to, through the license plate, identify the owner of the vehicle and then we're able to cite quicker. That way, arrive to the root of what is bringing the issue to Downey rather than having to run around and try to track down someone who may not have an identification.
I do have one more question and I just want to say thank you so much. I know that we reduced the time to do the review process, but I know the previous councils, they mentioned that, that something about a expedited review fee for businesses or other people that want to come into our community. Are we foregoing that expedited process because we reduce the time? Or are we considering doing that still?
The 14-day Business Day review periods was, in the industry, already considered an expedited review. Really expedite anything shorter than that, really, cities don't offer that. There are some cases where their reviews really don't warrant keeping the plans for 14 days. So we use, we were using the 14 business days as just establishing a baseline of expectation, but that is already in the industry a very expedited time period.
Thank you, Irma.
Back to the, the street vendor. I know we, City Prosecutor Jim had, Mr. Eckert had said that there was one that was in compliance and had both permits, both licenses rather. Are we still at that one?
We still only have one.
Just one?
One registered legal vendor.
So some of, maybe you didn't know, there's one legal by the, by the hospital. Do we have any vacancies right now?
Actually, the one legal vendor is not at the hospital. It's near the area of Woodruff and Firestone, near the, around the Bank of America. It's near the area of Woodruff and Firestone, near the, around the Bank of America area.
Well, I thought it used to be on, like Iowa and Brookshire.
We only have one. I believe I can follow up on that one, provide clarification with that.
Okay, I know, I know where you're talking.
We only have the one on Woodruff and Firestone.
Do you have any vacancies? Is our code enforcement not full?
We currently have one vacancy, and that is, we actually will be conducting interviews in the next couple of weeks in code enforcement.
Okay. And just a question for some of my contractor friends. The plans that need to be submitted, they say, are required to be folded versus just keep them rolled up in their normal stat, you know, rolled up, rolled up form. Is there any benefit? Is there a way to keep it rolled up, or you need to have it folded for a certain reason?
We've actually been phasing out paper summittals for the past maybe five to six months, so the folks that you might be talking, might be our plans that we're phasing out. Any new summittals are online-only digital summittals, so I can maybe speak to you about which plans are being submitted, because again, we're phasing out with, paper summittals are only allowed if they started with the paper submittal, but that number is significantly lower in the last couple months.
Okay. All right, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor.
And thank you, code enforcement. I see them out there.
All right, we'll go to Public Works and Director Bob Gardner.
Our Public Works Department's made up of four divisions, our administration and engineering divisions, which are here at City Hall. We have our maintenance division over at the yard by Independence Park, and we have our utilities division, which is over the yard off of Stewart and Gray. And our department's focused on planning, managing, and maintaining our roadway network, obviously maintaining those traffic signals, street lighting, our water, sewer, and stormwater infrastructure, as well as our sidewalks. And we maintain the vehicle fleet, our public facilities, rights of way, urban forest, and our parks. Looking at some of our accomplishments over the last year, we were able to pave 20 miles of residential streets. We began construction of five miles of arterial paving on Woodruff Avenue and Downey Avenue. We paved one mile of alleys, which is 16 alley segments north of Foster Road. We launched year one of the residential streetlight installation program, which we're working on right now and should be going through the summer. We installed stop signs at 20 intersections, and we hauled 1,500 tons of illegally dumped Looking at our budget really quick, we're covered by both the general fund as well as other funds. On the general fund side, about $10 million goes towards paying for our operations here at City Hall, as well as in our maintenance division. And then we manage other funds, the utility enterprise funds to cover our utilities division, as well as a number of grants and local return funds that go towards our, all of our capital improvement projects. And looking at our goals and objectives for next year, we are going to be installing a traffic signal at Suva Street and Guatemala Avenue and completing the Firestone and Lakewood intersection improvements. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions you might have.
You're on fast track, right?
We are trying to pick up the pace just a hair here as we go into our general government.
Thank you for all the great work. We appreciate the team.
Thank you.
All right, we'll turn to, if there's no questions from council, to Human Resources and bring up Director McQueen.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to share with you regarding the Human Resources Department's operations. So with that, the Human Resources Department is responsible for providing all of the essential services for the city's personnel functions to all city departments, to the current employee population of approximately 765, both full and part-time employees. All of our duties are listed on, our main areas of responsibility are listed on the slide there, but just to kind of highlight a few, these include recruitment, selection, employee and labor relations, workers' compensation, employee benefits, and risk management. So, the next item. This is a new item for this year, and some of these numbers have been touched on by some of the other department heads already in regards to vacancies. And so one thing just to note is there may be some discrepancy in those numbers, as these were polled at a different timeframe than some of the more recent numbers that have been mentioned previously. But this is in response to AB 2561, which modified the Myers-Millias-Brown Act and now requires public agencies to annually address the status of their job vacancies by bargaining unit. As part of this requirement, if the city has a greater than 20% vacancy rate in any particular bargaining unit, there's additional steps the city must comply with. Happy to say we don't have any that are over that threshold, so we don't have those additional steps, but we do have this chart on screen, which breaks down the vacancy rate by bargaining unit for each of the city's seven bargaining units. We also have one category under listed for the unrepresented positions, which includes the city's executive, middle management, unrepresented positions, and also the full-time temporary positions of ambulance operators that we have as well. So in this chart, just to address some of the areas that have higher vacancy rate, this includes both the Public Safety Auxiliary Association and also the Police Officers Association, one of which was just addressed earlier, largely related to the added positions due to Measure D with the additional 17 positions that were added during this fiscal year. Also, another area that we have that has a higher rate is our Maintenance Association. This was largely due to some of the vacancies within the water utility and due to the highly competitive nature of some of the positions within that water industry. Since this data was polled originally early on in March as part of the budgetary process, we've continued to make strides to fill vacancies, and since that time period, we have processed an additional 19 full-time employees, which are working to drive down some of those, those numbers, and we're continuing to work with our departments to come up with creative ways to work and fill these vacancies. As part of some of these efforts, in December of this fiscal year, we implemented a new module of the city's applicant tracking system. This is the NeoGov Atract module, and it's basically a relationship management system which allows the city to reach out to applicant pool of over 2.7 million public sector job seekers, and we can then market directly to passive candidates that may be qualified for a specific position. So that's one system that we added, and we've been using heavy to try to drive additional applicants to our positions. Also, as part of our recruitment initiatives, we've increased recruitment advertisement on job and career field-specific platforms to try to drive the number of qualified applicants we're receiving for our vacancies. And also specifically in regards to the police officer vacancies, working with the Police Department, we've increased the frequency of testing. Due to the highly competitive nature of public safety recruitment at the moment, we're trying to make sure to act quickly for those vacancies and fill, grab those candidates as soon as they are available. The next slide, covering some of our accomplishments for this year. As mentioned in the previous slide, one of the items we're proud of is the Atract module implementation to try to help our recruitment and selection efforts. Since the implementation of this program, we've sent out approximately 5,900 targeted notifications to potential applicants informing them of city vacancies. Also this year, we instituted a new training program designed to help advance the skills of the city's managers and supervisors by offering a rotating list of tailored topics for their roles, and we're offering those on-site for convenience. We also expanded the city's wellness programs, adding a wide range of activities in an effort to improve morale and increase retention efforts, and these activities included some activities like yoga, lunch and learn opportunities, massages, and other special events for employees as well. Also this year, we conducted recruitment and selection processes, which resulted in the establishment of 110 eligibility and hiring lists, which resulted in the hiring of 52 full-time employees, including eight police officers and 91 part-time employees. And on the next slide, we have an overview of our budget, all general fund. We have a total of five full-time positions and two part-time positions, which provide human services to the city. And going forward to our goals and objectives for next year, these are largely related to negotiations. The city's going to be entering into new negotiations for new memorandum, memorandum of understanding with the city's seven bargaining units, all of which will be expiring during the next fiscal year, and so we'll be working largely on that, negotiating new agreements for both wages and benefits for all of the city's employees. And then in addition to that, we're continuing to evaluate the city's recruitment and retention efforts to advance the city as an employer of choice, so we'll be constantly working on that as well. So with that, that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
On the NeoGov Atract, is it like a, like a LinkedIn, or did you go to a seminar and learn of it, or is it a new type of a platform?
It's a new module of an existing system that we have, so the city currently uses our recruitment, our applicant tracking system is with NeoGov, and so it's a new component to that, which basically, similar to LinkedIn and some other platforms, opens up their database of applicants to us. So now through that system, I can go in and search by radius for your current employer's name and your current job title, and then pull pools of applicants based off of that, and then market directly to them. So one of the areas we've been using is specifically in public safety. I can go find anyone that's currently employed as a police officer or a deputy sheriff, you know, within our surrounding agency, and then I can send them messages directly towards our lateral opportunities and things of that nature.
That's great.
So yeah, great tool.
Thank you. Thanks, James.
Thank you, James.
All right, we'll turn to Finance and ask our Assistant City Manager to provide the presentation.
Good afternoon again, Mayor, members of the city council. I'll be providing a brief overview of Finance. So Finance consists of four different divisions, Administration, Accounting, Purchasing, and Cashier. The Finance Department provides and is responsible for the management of the city's fiscal operations, including the successor agency to the former Community Development Commission, CIACA, and the Downey Seminary District. For accomplishments for the fiscal year 2425, the city developed the 13th consecutive balanced annual budget. The city also received the GFOA and CSMFO award for the city's budget for the 12th consecutive year, and the city received the GFOA award for excellence in financial reporting for the 25th consecutive year. I'll also note that as part of the, in addition to this accomplishment, just to also mention the audit that we did receive recently for the ACRA that was just completed, that it also came through with no findings, which is a substantial accomplishment for the department. Also, the department launched the ERP modernization initiative, so as you're aware, we are going through to upgrade our ERP system. Right now, we are going through the proposals and selecting the vendor and bringing that back for selection and approval. This is a highlight of the department's financial budget. So key, Finance is a little different from the other departments, there's multiple funding sources that come into it for different reasons. On the general fund side, I just want to point out that under contract and professional services, a large dollar amount is related to CIACA. Our contract for CIACA is a little over a million dollars, and it comes out of that line item. All the other funding sources for general fund is related to the operations of the Finance Department. On the other side, looking at the other funds related to Finance, there are multiple items that go into that, specifically public liability insurance, workers' comp, different bonds, Measure M and Measure R bonds, Measure S equipment for debt service for some of the equipment. All of that is housed out of the Finance Department and categorized in different funding sources, but it's listed under the Finance Department. So goals and objectives for the following year is going to begin the implementation of the new RP system, incorporate AI and automotive features in the RP system. This is actually a really critical one for the department. There's a lot of interfacing with different vendors and customers, especially when it comes to ambulance, water, processing of invoices, and we're trying to determine key features that could make that process much simpler and more efficient for both the external and internal staffers. In addition to that, we're looking at enhancing budget reporting and tracking of revenues and expenditures, and just continue to identify areas for possible savings for the city. And with that, that concludes my area. Any questions from the council?
Thank you, Vanya. Any questions?
Thank you, Bonnie.
All right, we'll turn it over to our City Clerk.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the city council. Thank you for the opportunity to present the City Clerk's Office budget. The Office of the City Clerk is a service department within municipal government upon which the city council, city departments, and the general public rely on for information regarding the operations and legislative history of the city. The City Clerk serves as the liaison between the public and city council, ensuring transparency and public access to information. The City Clerk's Office also works closely with the city manager, Assistant City Manager and City Attorney on various city matters. Some of the responsibilities that fall under the City Clerk's Office includes coordination and administration of city elections, preparing, posting and distributing the city council meeting agendas, ensuring compliance with the Brown Act, processing public records requests and subpoenas for city records, processing and maintaining official records of the city, including resolutions, ordinances, and agreements adopted by the city council. Some of our accomplishments this year were successfully managing the November 5th municipal election for Council Districts 1, 3, and 5, identifying and acquiring an agenda management software to streamline the agenda preparation and distribution process, collaborating with the city attorney in the process to address the city's election system matter, and we have processed approximately 900 public records requests and 55 subpoenas for copies of records this year. Here is an overview of the City Clerk's budget. We have two full-time positions, and we had a decrease in our budget this year since it is a non-election year. So this year's budget will cover our salaries and benefits, general operations, materials and supplies, contract and professional services, liability and property insurance. Some of our goals and objectives for the next year will be to fully implement the functionality of the agenda management software, including training city staff on how to use the software, continuing to work on records management efforts to digitize permanent records and prepare transitory records for destruction, and utilizing transcription software to improve efficiency and completion of council meeting minutes. And that is all for the City Clerk. I am available if you have any questions.
Just a quick question, because we now have a new district, any extra costs associated with that, or it won't be really effective until the year of the election, when it's in effect?
Yes, that is correct. I don't know what the cost will be at this time. You know, we would need to see how the county bills us for that.
Okay.
For that district.
Thank you, Alicia.
Thank you, Alicia.
All right, Mr. Funkel, present next.
Hello, good afternoon, Mayor and council. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss and brief the Office of the City Attorney and our budget goals for last fiscal year and the upcoming fiscal year. Our essential services are really day-to-day legal guidance, support, and representation for all city officials and staff on matters of law relating to their duties. The responsibilities of the City Attorney's Office are specified more specifically in Section 703 of the Charter. They really fall into three different categories. Advisory, that is the provision of day-to-day legal advice to the city council and to city agencies. Transactional, the review and preparation of legal documents such as resolutions, contracts, ordinances, and litigation, whether that's managing litigation being conducted by outside counsel or doing it in-house. So those really are the three areas that the City Attorney's Office functions in. We don't have any separate divisions. Our office is on the smaller side, if you will. It consists of myself, and I'm happy to report that this fiscal year, we have added a paralegal. When I stepped into the role of, in September of 2023, that position had been vacant, but after a robust recruitment period, we've been able to find, I think, a great individual with experience in municipal agencies, several years, I might add, who's recently joined the department, so I'm hopeful that she will be able to, I think, enhance what already is a high level of service. Accomplishments for 2425, there's just, I've highlighted some of the key ones up here, but I'll focus on a few. I think together we've strengthened our vigilance for public comment protocol, legal support for 2024 elections, including council districts and the sale tax measure. I do want to note that I worked in partnership with our City Clerk's Office and our City Manager's Office on those elections or on the election matters there. And finally, the resolution of the election system challenge. Just as a brief recollection, as if anyone needs one, our election system of a hybrid sort was challenged in late 2024, and we came before you in several instances in several instances. and we came before you in several instances in the context of public hearings to resolve that challenge. I'm glad to report that it has now been resolved. There is one item in there that I did want to highlight further, and that's the integration of city attorney offices, services throughout the agencies. At heart, the city attorney's offices is a service-oriented department. I take that seriously in providing services to everyone here. And I'm glad to report at this point in time, we have achieved, I think, is a very healthy partnership with all the agencies here at the city, certainly with the city council. You are our, you know, apex client, if you will, but I have several other clients as well, and I'm happy to report that on a day-to-day basis, we're available to serve all their legal needs. My office averages about 70 items for review each month, and we usually try to turn around those matters within one to two business days unless they're unusually complex. The budget for next year is fairly flat. We do have the addition of the paralegal position, and that started just in early April. And finally, for 2025, 2026, always, as a goal of my office is to advance the priorities and objectives of the city council. One of those specifically for 2526 is a charter amendment evaluation and a preparation where we'll meet with the ad hoc committee to identify areas of the charter for a potential amendment before the voters in 2026. And there are some housekeeping and administrative matters with the election transition system or the transition, the election system to conclude. Other than that, the last point, bullet point I put up there is deepening our in-house expertise across all areas. Our office regularly avails ourselves of continuing legal education to make sure that we're keeping abreast of the latest and the greatest and the changes of law and in order to equip us to really handle the city's legal needs as much of it as possible in-house. And so we're going to continue to do that across next fiscal year as well. And that concludes my presentation. If there are any questions, I'm happy to entertain them.
Thank you, John. Any questions, colleagues?
Thank you, John, for the great work you continue to do. We appreciate you.
And always making yourself available, you know? It's a very comfortable, open-door policy.
All right, last presentation, city manager's office, central administration.
Thank you, city manager Bradley. So I'll be closing out the department triple time. So I'll be doing the last presentation for the department heads and the departments, and just want to take an opportunity to thank all of the city council members for your continual support, also city staff, as we execute all of the goals and accomplishments that we have mentioned here today. So for the city manager's office, we have the divisions broken down as public information, legislative fair, special projects, ADA, language access, and IT. And the department is responsible, the office is responsible for the implementation of policy decisions as established by the city council and coordination of various efforts with the different departments along the city. For accomplishments for the 2425 year, the city completed the year one of the Downey Forward 2030 strategic plan, including the launch of the public-facing webpage, brochure, and quarterly status. The department also coordinated the educational materials and outreach related to Measure D that was successfully passed. Also, I do want to mention that it's not highlighted, but we do have information and data here regarding public information, which I know that was an item that was of interest to council member Frometta. So just a note, I will go through it really quickly. So 21% increase for Instagram over prior year, 14% increase on Facebook, achieved a combined page and profile reach of 1,000,888 users, and published 1,226 posts and 43 videos, which is approximately another 50% from prior year, and then generating 51,000, 851 posts and reactions, which is also double from prior years, and then reaching 2.46 users, so million users, I should mention. So just to distinguish between the two users, the reach. So the profile reach is individuals going directly to our social media homepages and also across all platforms. And then the 2.4 million users is that every time that we post a social media post or video, that is the outreach going out to all. So it's pretty substantial, and it's increased dramatically over the last few years from our public information office. Also, the city entered into an exclusive negotiating agreement with Lewis Land Developers for the advancement of the Rancho Lozamigo South Campus, and we continue to work with our county colleagues to move that along. We also did a new digital budget book, so ClearGov is on the city's website. So it's more transparent and user-friendly for our public to review the information in our budget book. And also, we obtained approval for the security camera rebate program using Measure D that would be launched July 1. So for the city manager budget highlights, there is nine full-time positions. I do want to note there was a slight change from what your PowerPoint is to what's on the screen. Primarily reason is because, well, the reason is because we took economic development out. So we're moving more and more as an office of ED under the CM's office to its own department, and so that does take a little bit maneuvering in the budget system. So the monies that you saw under Austin's previous presentation was removed out of here so that what you see left is strictly just the CM's office. So related to that is about 3.2 million for operations in the CM's office, and then some monies related from other funds related to the office, about 75,758,000. So goals and objectives for the upcoming fiscal year. So it's going to develop a formal intern program is something we're going to be looking at, something that the council has discussed with the city managers, opportunities for learning for city projects and cultivate future talent. Also, we're going to identify opportunities to redevelop the former NASA Volti Building, which is also a critical legacy item for the city, and trying to figure out different ways to revitalize that site. Also, with the upcoming events in the LA area, we're going to be looking at ways that we can leverage for the World Cup next year and also for LA 2028. So we're working with various LA County folks and also with our fellow departments and seeing how, what we can do to get involved and to bring folks to Downey. So that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions?
Outstanding.
Thank you, Vanya.
Thank you.
We do have one final item. If there's no further questions or comments from council, then we'll go over our community-based organization funding program for the year, and that will close us out for the day.
I'm going to recuse myself from this item. It's the last one? Okay, I'm going to recuse myself of the item because of my affiliation with one of the applicants for this program.
Mr. Chacon.
I am back. Our CBO program. That's it, we're good. This began in 2023 as an initiative to assist local nonprofits that serve the Downey community in providing community benefits to Downey residents. Just a little overview of the last few years. In that first year, we received seven requests in the amount of 135, just over $135,000. The council approved five of those requests in the amount of $77,000. Last year, 2425, the council received five requests in the amount of 106, just over 106,000. They approved the five requests in the amount of $89,000. This year, we received 16 requests for an amount of about $399,000. So the program has gotten successful, and the word has gotten out, and more people have applied, which is a good thing. Staff went before the budget subcommittee. There was a recommendation from the subcommittee from the get-go to look to lower the overall amount of the program from $100,000 to $80,000. So you'll see there that that was a recommendation from the subcommittee, and we worked based off of that number. So you'll see the nine recommended organizations. It's a total of $80,000. Each organization has a different entity that they represent and a program that they have. The 1020 Club, their program is an Inspire and Power Youth Initiative where they have workshops. They also have some fees that they're able to get youth into different programs in the community. They originally requested $40,000. The direct service provided was some salaries for staff as well as some classes and material with a total of 45 residents being served. The recommended amount there is $10,000. The Cerritos College Foundation, they have a specific track for teacher track which is having its 25th anniversary. This track is specific to students who want to become teachers, and it helps with mentoring, educational resources, and some scholarships. They basically can go there and take a track to become a teacher, and it includes their student teaching and some other resources for them. And they would be able to service 77 Downey residents. They requested 5,000, and the recommendation is for the 5,000. Desert Rain Church has a food pantry and resource center that they requested $50,000 for. This is for some vehicle repairs, fuel, and insurance. The recommended amount there is $9,000. They service over 400 households a month. Downey First Christian Church also has a food distribution program. They have some vehicle maintenance and supply, food needs. $10,000 was the requested amount, recommended amount is 9,000. They service about just over 4,000 residents. The Downey Symphony, this is for their annual concerts in the park. Remember, this is always a year in advance, so this would be for next year's concert. This pays directly for the musicians' wages. $20,000 was the request, $14,000 is the recommended amount, with about 500 or 600 Downey residents served gangs out of Downey in their intervention, prevention, community engagement programs. $25,000 was the request. This goes for the backpack program, fitness clubs, Kids &amp; Cops Day, and some workshops that they host for about 600 residents. Requested 25,000, recommended amount is 10,000. LA Cada for the Downey Pride 2025 requested 25,000 specifically for the family fun zone, which will include some cultural performances and logistical support. 1,800 Downey residents serviced, $7,000 is what the recommended amount was. PIH Health Foundation, the Substance Use Navigator Program, $15,000. This is a treatment assistance and housing program for anybody who comes into the emergency room with a drug-related overdose. It enters them into a program that helps them with addiction. They currently have serviced about 380. The recommended amount is 7,000. The Downey Historical Society, total of 15,000, let me make sure, $15,000 for equipment and artifact storage. Requested amount 15,000, recommended about 9,000. This is for a digital printer or scanner to scan some of the copies of their documents and pictures and make them digitalized, as well as some additional storage containers to make room and take them out of the current historical society, put them in a tempered bin so that they can have more room inside of their facility. These are the nine recommended organizations and the recommended totals that went through staff and the subcommittee, and I can answer any questions at this time.
Thank you, Jason. Any questions, colleagues?
Questions?
I think in lieu of this next year and the unforeseen economic sense, I think we also need to kind of, as we have this rather than the 100, to pull back. This is a 20% reduction of maybe what we had allocated in prior years, but to kind of be conservative and watch what we have for the upcoming year as well on some of these numbers. So.
Yeah, I agree with Mayor Protem Pemberton. You know, those kind of the reasoning behind the 20% reduction. I do have a question for city manager. What is, what are the, what is the differential difference between revenues and expenditures this fiscal year as opposed to the last fiscal year?
So this fiscal year, we have a budget surplus of about $125,000. Last year, our projected budget surplus was 1.4 million. So a big, big difference between those two years.
Yeah, that's, that's a, that's a huge difference, and thank you for sharing that. And, you know, given the economic outlook and the need to be conservative and really prudent with the budget, I, I think as a council and as a city, we should seriously consider putting a pause on this CBO program. And, you know, I'm not sure if we agendaize that, but I think we should discuss that at an upcoming council meeting. We should really consider putting a pause on this.
So it's up to you, the council. You can give us direction now if you'd like to put a pause on it, or you can bring it back for consideration. But if you want to discuss that now, you can.
Now, this is after
After this.
Approving this.
Yes.
I, I would, I would, I would second that, again, only because things are really uncertain in the coming year or two. I would pause it after approving this one.
And I could see, I can also see the residents understanding our reasoning to this. It's not like we have excessive amount of income coming through, that we are frugal in watching the budget. We have different priorities, as much as we'd want to give to so many good nonprofits. And I can say a lot of the, some of the organizations here are for youth at risk. So it's for specific targeted Downey groups and benefiting the community of Downey for most all of these. So I can see that as well for now.
Yes.
Yeah, I think the right thing to do, I mean, you know, the city's not obligated to, you know, allocate any money for nonprofits, but I think the proper thing to do here is just, if we're going to do this, we'll have a discussion, and if it goes through, to give all these worthy nonprofits a heads up and notice to say, you know what? We're going to put a pause on this.
Just mentioned, do you reach out to the ones that, you know, there's a number of others that didn't make this and let them know the reasoning or logic, like we, we are not here on sponsorships? Some of those applicants were in sponsorships except for actual programs, hands-on, so they may know in the future if we do continue this, the reasoning and why.
Yes, we'll reach out to all 16 organizations and let them know either of the recommended lower amount, also the ones who were not recommended and why they were not recommended, or if there's other programs for them, for sponsorship specifically, let them know there's another program for them to be able to seek sponsorships or any of those.
And I think as a council, again, there could be a letter drafted, right? That is sent out or even that is, you know, published through social media as to, after we approve this amount moving forward, you know, there's going to be a pause and the reasoning why.
Well, I think we just officially, I'd like to make a motion to bring this back as a conversation. Or, I mean, are we able to agree on a pause today, or do we have to bring that back?
I think we already have a second for that.
Yes, there is a second.
To
To pause. My understanding is the direction is to approve the current laws?
To approve this and pause it moving forward.
2627 would be a pause.
And we would notify the agencies that would be impacted that that pause is coming, is my understanding.
Correct.
Yeah. So do we need clarification on my motion?
No, I think it's been adequately clarified by city manager Bradley and council member Frometta and the mayor Protem.
Just one question. On the application process, you had a cutoff, was it around March of this year? So if it was a 2627, it would be around March of '27. If we were to change it and unpause it, there would still be enough time in '27 for them to apply?
The process begins in January, and we open it up in late January and give them about two months to apply of the window.
Okay.
Thank you, Jason. So.
I'll take a roll call vote.
Okay.
Councilmember Frometta?
Yes.
Councilmember Ortiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Trujillo is abstaining from this item. Mayor Protem Pemberton?
Yes.
And Mayor Sosa?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion is passed.
Thank you. Thank you, Jason.
Mayor Sosa, if I could just add one item. So related to the revenues that you had seen earlier today, that did not take into account the reduction into this item, since it was on a final decision from the entire city council. So now that this is a final decision, moving forward with the 80,000, that $20,000 savings will now go, be reduced from the reduction from the expenditure side. So you're going to just see a small change for the next, when we go to a budget adoption, you'll just see a slight change.
Thank you. Great, thank you.
So just to wrap up, I'd like to thank the council for the patience today. I know the meeting went a little bit long. I appreciate everybody, the content you were able to comment on, the direction you gave us, and we'll take this into the final budget presentation, and that will come to you on June 24th for final consideration.
Could I also, excuse me, make, I'd like to make something if we could consider in adding it to this year's budget. We have a serious epidemic with feral cats and the cat population in our city. And in working with our CIACA shelter as a board member, there's many cities that offer a free or low-cost spay and neutering program. And I would like to see if we can put in our budget, say, for example, like a pilot program, 100 cats, to work with having and offering, because their program is a paused, offering a cat spay and neuter program for 100 cats. It's usually about, it could be 200 to 300 a cat, maybe at about that amount, about 25,000 or something of that nature, to see if we can reduce the problems that we have here in our city. And it's, it's quite severe, and many other cities have something to contain it. But we need to really get a hand on so many areas that we are having this problem to have residents come in, and the director can kind of guide how it can be done, what we can give them. But I'd like to see if we can do something in that nature, because I was going to ask them to have it through this, this grant, but they are them to have it through this grant, but they are not able to, they are not able to qualify with the type joint powers authority that they are, so. I'd like to move that. We look at the budget to see if we can have an allocation, we could try it as a pilot program, to have a spay-neuter pilot program for Downey for about, up to $25,000.
To bring it back for discussion?
Mm-hmm.
If that's the director for council, we could bring that back with a June 24th for final consideration.
Okay. There was a motion. Is there a second?
For June 24th, for this budget?
For this year's budget, '25, '26. We're one of the few cities that don't have a program such as that for the cats.
I think it's going to be a little, I mean, didn't we just say that we're going to reduce and then we're adding another, as much as I want to support and help you out, Dorothy, I think it's just a little...
Or we can reduce it to something smaller in that sense, but as I had suggested that maybe they can do through this grant program, we need to have something in our budget that might allow our city, just for our residents, to have something like this. And I was hoping to be able to do that for them and for these animals, because it's just an epidemic that's happening right now.
We can bring it back to have a discussion.
For a lower amount? We can discuss. Okay. Second, for a lower amount.
Okay. All right, there was a motion, a second, so that's going to come back for discussion. So any other comments, colleagues?
Just need a vote to confirm that that's...
No, that's...
Doesn't need a vote.
Is it just adding?
Just to bring it back.
Just to bring it back and discuss, there's no, there's, to bring it back as a discussion.
If there's a second, then they can proceed without the vote. That's our standard procedure. But is it just to clarify for the record, is the motion to return the item for discussion at the next council meeting for discussion, or is there a motion to allocate monies in the fiscal year '24, '25 budget?
Bring it for discussion.
Yeah, to June 24th.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So I just had some comments. I just want to thank the department heads and all the staff, professional staff that put, I know, there was a lot of work that went into this annual budget process. Thank you. Thank you as a longtime resident of Downey and as a current mayor. Really appreciate all your knowledge and professionalism. I do want to add that this is a big deal, the fact that the 12th consecutive year in a row, we were recognized, the city was recognized with the GFPA and the CSAMFO. And, you know, I hope that the residents really realize how much of a big deal that is, because over the past couple decades, even over the last few years, there've been a lot of, significant amount of cities, special purpose districts, counties, and even school districts that have either been flagged or have gone bankrupt. And, you know, that's, that happens, you know, sometimes you have unforeseen circumstances, but again, when there's circumstances that happen, the cities that are really prudent, or the municipalities that are really prudent in having adequate reserves and proper budgeting throughout the year, you can't predict the future, but you can plan for it and prepare for it. So again, it's a big deal. I hope the residents understand that, but Downey, you know, really stands out as a, you know, municipality when it comes to being financially prudent. So I just want to thank everybody for all your efforts, and I say that as a stakeholder in Downey in several different ways. So thank you very much.
Thanks, man.
Yeah? So any other comments? The time is now 6:06. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Thank you.